This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we are calling this meeting to order. It is currently 7:02 PM. At this time, for roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Did we have any public comments submitted?
We had no public comments submitted by email or in writing.
All right. If anyone would like to make public comment, please step up the podium, state your name and address. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is old business, which we have none. We'll move on to new business. Six A is a meeting with KB Ambulance regarding the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget request. Please come up. Just make sure the microphones are turned on.
Good evening. So I'm going to just do some introductions, and then we have a short kind of proposal presentation. We're not going to go over the individual packet that you guys have received. That's kind of self-explanatory. Certainly, if there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer them after we kind of go through our presentation. So introductions. So I'd like to introduce... So Stephen Varga is Chief of Service. Myself, Board Chair Scott Shatney. Jason Burgess next to me is our Board Treasurer, and Kevin Thompson down the end is a board member. So we'll go through those points, and at this time, I'll let Kevin have the floor for some comments.
Sure. Good evening. As Scott said, I'm Kevin Thompson, and I serve as the Town of Killenly representative on the KB Ambulance Board. Tonight, Chief Varga, Scott, and Jason will provide some facts and figures for you about the what and the how KB Ambulance does what it does. I'd like to provide the why with a personal story. I'm going to take us back to December of 2009. Our son Connor was four and a half at the time. He had grown ill, and we didn't realize how serious it was until the night of December 19th. As we were preparing for bedtime, he vomited and began to crash. My wife called 911, and I stayed with Connor. Within minutes, we had first responders at our residence, including a KB Ambulance. As I joined Connor in the ambulance and continued to pray over him, the KB Ambulance staff stayed calm and professional and stabilized Connor on the way to the hospital. Later that night, we were transferred from Day Kimball to CCMC in Hartford. As the next nine days unfolded, and we went through an episode of the show House, they didn't know what was wrong with him. They were doing all kinds of tests. They did different procedures. Couldn't figure it out. So we didn't know what was happening to our son. It wound up, he wound up being diagnosed with a rare condition, the first child in the state of Connecticut with the condition he was diagnosed. This year, Connor will graduate from Killenly High School, class of 2023. We truly believe, if not for the swift action of the first responders, including the KB Ambulance crew, the outcome may not have been so positive. So tonight, and in the coming weeks, when you discuss in debate certain funding should go, remember that this line on him in the budget is not a nice-to-have. It's a need-to-have. It's a life-saving service. As you hear from Chief Varga, Scott, and Jason, we are asking for the appropriate funding to continue to provide a dedicated crew to provide this vital service. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So Steve's going to have some comments now.
Good evening, Chief Steve Varga, KB Ambulance. So just a quick overview of what services we provide to the Town of Killenly, and a brief statement about what we're looking at moving forward. So we obviously have ambulance service in town. We provide a basic-level ambulance, 24/7, paid staff in quarters to respond to emergencies. During the day, we also have a second ambulance. That ambulance is a shared resource with the NICAG program, as it's an ALS ambulance, meaning it has a paramedic onboard, so one EMT, one paramedic. That also means that it responds to NICAG calls as well, not just Town of Killenly calls. During the weekdays, we have administrative staff available to help provide assistance and callbacks for staffing third, fourth crew calls with the other ambulances. We also provide staffing for several, standby staffing for several town events, recreational events, school events, athletic events. And as I'll talk a little later about, this is all paid staff now. It's not volunteer anymore. So, you know, some of the challenges that we've faced over the years, obviously, especially the COVID years, has been staffing and costs. Throughout the years, and even before COVID, volunteerism was on the decline. We've had shifted volunteer shifts to paid shifts several times over the last decade. And then COVID caused an overall decrease in workforce, as we all know, and nearly made volunteerism in our field extinct. There are still some volunteers around, but we don't have any volunteer shifts left. All our chefs are now paid chefs. All our standby chefs are paid because we don't have enough volunteers to staff them. What had ended up happening is the volunteer shifts were starting to get filled with overtime rather than volunteers or per diems or part-time staff. So it just didn't make sense anymore. So that also, with the decrease in volunteerism, it decreases our ability to do callbacks and staff second, third, fourth crew calls as the call volumes increases. As you can see in the pamphlet, over the last year, three years, they've come back to pre-COVID numbers or nearly pre-COVID numbers. The call volume can get pretty high during the daytime. So along with that, we've had to increase our compensation to remain comparable with the surrounding towns and to help retain staff. And we continue to look for ways to recruit and retain staff. So we developed a goal for the upcoming year to increase our ambulance coverage by making that second ambulance during the day a dedicated ambulance to the Town of Killenly. And to add four hours in the evening to have an ambulance for four hours in the evening as a shared unit, as we do now. By doing this, by dedicating the second ambulance to the Town of Killenly during the day, that ambulance would no longer go out of town for paramedic calls. They wouldn't service the NICAG contract anymore. You know, last year, nearly 600 responses out of town with that ambulance. So if we achieve this goal, we can decrease the response times in town. We can increase the call coverage, decrease the callbacks during the day because we would have a dedicated service, as well as decrease the stress on the mutual aid system from the surrounding towns. Additionally, it would help decrease crew strain by decreasing the, by evening out the workload of the call volume and hopefully help with employee retention in that way. So this has been an important achievement for us or a goal for us. So we put in our proposal this year, asking for funding for 12 hours for an additional EMT to help us achieve this goal. This is above and beyond the normal ask. So the ask includes that 12-hour, adding that 12-hour EMT. I thank you for your time and consideration. Jason will have more for the actual numbers.
Yep. So as Chief Varga just stated in our request, we're asking to increase our coverage to 16 hours a day, seven days a week. So on the last page of our proposal, you'll see that our remaining balance for our 2324 request shows a negative $49,000. That is what the KB Ambulance is going to provide as a shared resource, as the chief was mentioning. That is our, what we're going to put in from our own funding for this proposal. Just to explain a few of the numbers, why the increases of some of the changes have increased. As Chief Varga mentioned, we no longer have volunteers, so that payroll costs have increased. And also, on the non-payroll costs, we've added funding to replace an aging ambulance fleet. We currently, our vehicles are aging. The costs of the ambulances are increasing. We need to start budgeting now so that way we can take care of the ambulances and decrease our maintenance costs. Those costs have also increased over the past few years. And then our medical supplies costs have also increased, which explains some of the non-payroll cost increases.
So, thank you, Jason, Steve, Kevin. So one of the things that we have been asked time and time again was about overtime. So I want to answer those questions to the best of my ability. So I want to first explain, before we talk about numbers, I want to explain how overtime impacts our organization, right? So there's a couple of key pieces to this. So shift coverage, right? If an EMS team gets a call that's close to the end of their shift, and they have to, obviously have to finish that call, right? They can't switch crews in the middle of a call. So they finish that call, and if they're two hours late getting off shift, that entire two hours counts as time and a half to the budget, right? So that's kind of one component to overtime. It's a full time and a half hit on the budget. Conversely, if we, if we look at a callback, we pay a different rate for callbacks to entice our crews to come back after work when they're off shift, to come back to work. We pay them, I'll say a time and a half rate, it's time and a half, in dollars. But that, that typically funds itself because you're billing for that call, and they're not on shift where there's idle time. But that cost goes in our overtime payroll system. So even though it may be funded, it still counts towards overtime, right? So covering a shift, if we have a call out, someone's on vacation, somebody calls out, they're sick, or if we have not enough staff to hand, to cover something, right? That shift is allocated in the budget, and it's not necessarily overtime because you would have had to pay the person to run that shift anyway, right? The person that called out would have had to been paid. So what should be accounted for in overtime is only the halftime. But our payroll system, because that person that's covering the shift could be at 40 hours, that entire time and a half goes into our overtime bucket. Because it's not budget-centric, it's employee-centric, right? If the employee gets paid time and a half, it's counted as overtime. Not necessarily correctly, but obviously, getting the employee paid properly is important. Training, if we do system-wide training or agency-wide training, and folks that are full-time employees have to come back and attend that training, they're paid overtime, okay? So that is, again, a hit to overtime. We also have the converse, right? So we have administrative staff. We have two administrative staff that are salaried employees. That will, you know, if that person calls out and it's a day shift, that administrative staff can cover that day shift in their salary. So they would cover that day shift as part of their normal day. So that would do the opposite, right? It would reduce overtime. So the administrative staff is dedicated to try to reduce overtime where it makes sense. So, you know, as I said, the current payroll system tracks all overtime as time and a half, and that will inflate our overtime costs. We can only report on payroll holistically, so we don't report on payroll for Killenly versus Pomfert versus NICAG. Right now, our payroll percentage is global because we are not broken into business units. We do have a major project within KB on the, kind of on our radar for 2023, and that is to upgrade our payroll system so that we can track these things, right? We want to track them better, just like you want us to track them better. We want to track them better. So that is, that is in the works. That is on the agenda. That is on the list of things to do. So to answer that overtime question, our corporate overtime rate to date since last May is 13%, okay? That includes overtime for Thompson, the component of Thompson last year, where we didn't hire staff. So that was all overtime. It includes late shifts, callouts, callbacks, training. It also includes the first couple of months of transfer shifts, which are almost 100% overtime, but is not funded through the budget we're proposing to you. It's funded through a separate revenue source. So even though they're calculated in the 13%, it's not necessarily funding from Killenly. So what does that mean? It means we have 13%, but it's kind of difficult, and we've, you know, we've talked about this, and you've been a proponent of really wanting that information, and I agree with you. It's just difficult to take that number at face value and really understand the components of it. And it's tough for us. But we're, you know, we're going to make a commitment to untangle that a little bit. I think between the three board members sitting up here, we have a collective of probably a year and three months put together. So we're new to the organization. We understand there's, there's some gaps. There's always things that can be improved, as I'm sure you guys understand. And we're going to do our due diligence to do that. We're glad to answer questions. If there's a question we don't have the information for, we'll be glad to follow up. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. One thing I want to talk to you about, I saw that you purchased a 22 Ford Hybrid. I'm assuming that's the, like, the police interceptor SUV style?
Yeah. So that is a medic flight car, and that flight car is really for the NICAG contract.
Okay. What decisions, what thought process went into purchasing that vehicle specifically? And I will explain why I'm asking.
Sure. Steve, do you want to go through that and some of the information you had from Massachusetts?
So the biggest reason for the purchase was that we have two aging flight cars for that, for that contract, and we needed another flight car. When we were looking at them, there was limited availability, and we were looking at possibly waiting another year. So this became available. We investigated and talked to a company, or... Well, we purchased it through MHQ, and they do the interceptors for Massachusetts State Police. And all of the Massachusetts State Police interceptors had gone to that, and there had been really good reports about it being a reliable vehicle. So we also got numbers about the fuel savings with the hybrid. That intercept vehicle meets ambulances and can get parked for quite a while. A lot of times, especially during the winter, we'll lock it and leave it running to keep the medications warm inside of it. So if it can park without actually running the engine and keep those medications warm, we were all about that, you know? So that was a big part of it. My fleet maintenance man did look into it. He seemed to think that it was a good vehicle as well. So it was available. We made the purchase.
The reason why I ask is, the shop I work at, we do a lot of work for the state police collision repair. And having seen what happens to the hybrids specifically when they get into a front-end collision, extremely expensive to repair, a what would appear to be a lighter hit around the right headlight area can take out the connector that goes to the high-voltage inverter, the high-voltage module which is behind it. You cannot replace the connector. In order to repair that, you're ripping the entire front suspension, drivetrain, motor transmission transfer case out of it, ripping AC lines out, basically stripping it down almost to a shell in the front just to replace the harness because the harness runs from behind the headlight all the way through to the firewall underneath the top, well, in the top of the transmission tunnel above shielding, down to the battery underneath the passenger seat. So something to keep in mind. Other than, I mean, reliability-wise, they're great, and I hadn't thought about the part of keeping the medication warm. So I can definitely see an advantage to that. But just something to keep in mind.
Don't crash them.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, they won't be involved in high-speed chases where they have to ram a car, so.
Yeah, but all it takes is somebody not hearing the siren and the lights and pulling out in front of you.
And it does happen. We know that. Thankfully, it hasn't been...
And we've had no issue insuring that vehicle, so.
Yeah, I mean, as far as that, it's...
We have, you know, capable insurance on all of our fleet, so that would be managed that way. But certainly, good information.
Yeah. And like, the other part of it was downtime. I think that vehicle was down for almost two months because of waiting for the harness to come in and the repairs.
We did take the hybrid vehicle. We didn't take that lightly. We deliberated about it a lot. We talked about it. We got information. We talked to other agencies. We think we made a good call. We'll see how it goes.
I appreciate it, though.
LeBron, questions, comments? Mr. Whitehead.
So what do you anticipate your revenue stream by adding on an additional workforce?
So we think there's probably 150 to 200 calls that we'll pick up, especially in that evening hour, right? From 6:00 to 10:00 at night. There's, it's a little hard to see on the chart, but you'll see, just because of the way the numbers, the way that chart is framed, but you'll see the dip from about 6:00 to 10:00. There's quite a few mutual aid calls that come in in that hour. So we think we're probably in that 200 range. We did account for that number of calls into the billing, so we included those additional calls into the revenue so that that revenue is covering and calculated into those numbers. I think what it would do more, because we don't always necessarily miss the call, but a lot of times, we're delayed because the previous ambulance is coming from the hospital. And it's really, you know, we think we'll see more impact to bringing the call responses down, the timeframe down. So it's going to be both. You're going to lower the timeframe to unseen, and you're going to miss less calls. So it's a little bit of both. I think it's going to impact both numbers. And that's what we're going to look at next year, see if that's true.
So you're going to pick up a substantial amount of what would be another, another facility would be picking them up, like mutual aid?
Correct. Correct. We would cover the calls in Killenly versus relying on, you know, a Brooklyn or a, you know, or Thompson, or for that matter, pulling Pomfert, pulling our ambulance out of Pomfert, which is working on another contract. And those are all counted as mutual aid, and those neighboring ambulances agree to that, and we cover them. But we want to be at a point where we just, we think it's becoming, the delay is becoming a little high, and the amount of calls that, I don't want to say missed, right? We're covering what we're supposed to cover, and mutual aid is there for a reason, right? We cover mutual aid, they cover mutual aid. We just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. And again, the component of that, a big component of having that second crew is, you know, when you have one BLS ambulance, that BLS ambulance is doing BLS all day, and the ALS ambulance may be going outside of Killenly to cover an ALS call. So with two ambulances, with two BLS ambulances, those crews will rotate. So instead of one, one crew doing nine calls a day, both crews will do four or five, right? Not only do we not have the highest pay for our staff, we also work them the hardest. So we can do one of two things. We can either pay them more or try to balance out the workload, not reduce it. It's not going away, but we can balance it across the crews better, and that's going to help us do that. So retention and less overtime is the answer.
Are you going to increase their pay? Because I, from what I understand, they're probably the lowest-paid, most important people we have.
Yes. There are increases included in this budget from what they are today. Yes. That is part of this proposal. Absolutely.
Going back to your first question, from a revenue perspective, the, in the packet, in the 2324 request for billing, we're proposing, we're hoping to get an extra $100,000 from those additional calls. So we're anticipating about 250 additional calls that we can cover at our current billing rate. That's where the extra $100,000 comes from.
Now, is this ask across the board, this increase in ask that you guys are requesting?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you mean by that. Can you explain that a little more?
To all the towns, is this the same increase?
So...
Is it based on a per capita?
So it's based on a budget estimate that we've developed to provide the services that Killenly uses. So what Steve talked about at the beginning, where he said, we're providing you one full-time 24-by-7 ambulance and a 12-hour, 12-hour? Yeah, 12-hour ambulance, or one EMT on a 12-hour ambulance, plus the staff and the callback staff, that's, and the administrative staff and overhead and ambulance replacement, that's all included in that, in that calculation to the Town of Killenly. The other contracts we have have that same thing. They're different, obviously. We provide different services. But internally, we've developed that cost model to each of the organizations that we provide services to. So that's how we're, that's how we're developing the proposal that we're showing you. We did do increases to each, yeah, we did increases to each of our three, our, currently, our three contracts. They've all increased. I don't want to say it's the same. It's not. You know, it's different services and different organizations, and the overhead is very different.
So this increase is going to include a complete, another crew, and hopes for future additional ambulance, correct?
So, so right now, we provide a 24-by-7 BLS ambulance, and we provide a second ambulance that is an ALS ambulance. So what that means to the Town of Killenly is, the EMT in that ambulance is a Killenly resource. The medic in that ambulance is a NICAG resource. It's a shared, it's a shared model. Because to provide you over the last two, three years, to provide you with a full ambulance would have cost what we're proposing today. So we offset that over the last three, four, five years by sharing that resource. That resource can respond to a call in Killenly. That resource could respond to a medic call in Sterling, even though it's an ambulance, right? So what we're proposing is take the medic out of the ambulance, put him in a fly car. Now, that's NICAG. And what this cost includes is that second EMT, so now that ambulance stays in Killenly. So it, there'll be no, there'll be no need for that ambulance to leave Killenly as part of NICAG unless it's mutual aid, based on a mutual aid response, right, for an extra resource. Does that help?
So back to your original question.
I'm trying. If you have other questions, let me know. We'll try, we'll try to explain it however we can.
What we provide to the Town of Killenly is a lot more than what we provide to any other ambulance. We only have one other ambulance contract, right, for BLS ambulance. We call it the tri-town contract. Killenly obviously has a lot more call volume, which changes how that whole budget comes together. And also, our base is here, which changes how we can respond for a second, third, and fourth crew calls. But the other, so the other towns are much slower. They don't have the call volume to support it, and they actually pay more than you guys pay. And they pay more, we ask them for more than what we are asking you for one ambulance 24/7. And you guys have a much more service than what we provide to them.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's important, right? So the towns of Pomfert, Eastford, Hampton collectively, for one ambulance, pay way more than the Town of Killenly does.
I'm okay with that.
Well, it's, it's based on, right, an idle ambulance is expensive, right? A busy ambulance bills and covers itself. But there's a stair-step approach to that, right? So you, you know, if you're at a, I'm going to use kind of some fictitious numbers, but if you're at 1,000 calls, you may, I don't want to say balance out, but you may be in a good place. But as soon as you have to handle 1,200 and one ambulance can't do it, it's a high cost to add the second resource, which is why we've used strategies like, let's share that cost with the medic program. So we get a second ambulance, but you don't have to foot the whole bill. And we'll continue to use those strategies as we increase coverage, but we don't have to increase it in big chunks. We can increase it in small chunks using some, you know, some interesting methods to share cost, and that's the idea. And that's been done. Steve, how long has that ambulance been like that? Five, six, seven?
Since 2017.
2017?
Six years.
And, and we're just now to the point where, you know, it's, it's getting difficult to, again, the volunteers in the, in the area, you know, you used to be able to call at 2:00 in the afternoon, and you'd get a crew for a second, third, fourth ambulance. Those volunteers don't exist. So if we don't staff it, we don't cover it. So that, that's really the biggest difference. You know, that's a holistic change to our entire organization. And it's better to hire folks to cover those hours than it is to either not cover it or pay overtime to cover it. We'd rather just have staff. We'd rather just have staff.
So, one more question. So, out of the two ambulances that we're gonna have, is, is all, any of those gonna be utilized for the Day Kimball transfer?
Not at all.
So, that won't affect anything at all?
So, today, we have five ambulances, one is in Pomfert, two are dedicated to Killingly, third is a spare, or a third crew for Killingly, and, and the fifth is, is being used for transfers. And the transfer process will have its own ambulance, right, we're waiting for that licensing. We can't commit to large expenditures unless that licensing is done, why would we do that, right? We're not gonna commit over. But I will say with the transfer process, I know we've gone back and forth, and there's a difference of opinion between us and the board, which is okay. You know, we're paid in full, that program's going well, we are overstaffed from a nine-one-one standpoint, so some of our staff are now, I would say, not excess staff, 'cause we still need more for the transfer program, but we are more fully staffed than we would've been if we were just doing nine-one-one, so we're ahead of it. And it's going well, there's, there's always hiccups, and it's something we're, you know, I wouldn't say we're, the patient care side we're good at, but obviously, it's a new business, so we're working through, through things, but it's going well. You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, so I, you were talking about your, the paramedic fly cards, and obviously, they, they get a lot of wear and tear. But if you, with the call volume that we have, obviously, your ambulances are aging as well. And from what I understand, you can't really purchase an ambulance and put it on the road unless OEMS gives you the permission. So, what are you gonna do for your, 'cause those ambulance, some of those ambulances are really old, and I know they're really old, so...
So, our oldest ambulance is a two thousand thirteen, and that's where originally it was set to replace every ten years for the ambulances. That's probably gonna decrease as the nine-one-one call volumes have increased, so the mileages have gone up. So, working with the fleet management at KB, we're looking at probably decreasing that back to seven years for an ambulance, but that's a, that's the long-term plan, right? So, as far as adding ambulances to the fleet, the only reason right now that we have to add an ambulance to the fleet is for the transfer side. If we don't get that license or don't get that approval, we won't be doing the transports, how to, you know, we won't be doing the transfers. Once we have that approval, if, when we get that approval, then we'll add ambulances to cover that portion.
So, just to clarify, we can replace ambulances, we can take an ambulance out of service.
That's what I was gonna say next. And, and the other thing is, that two thousand thirteen was, is up for a replacement, we ordered a twenty-twenty-four to replace that ambulance. So, that was already in the process, be, before, that, we, we ordered that back in June.
I was gonna ask what the lead time was on...
It is, we expect it maybe this time in twenty-twenty-four, next year, so, spring of next year. So, we had done that already, and then after that, we did replace our, we had a two thousand six that we replaced. So, we can replace the ambulances, we can't add them.
A little while ago, you were talking about, you have to leave the, I'm not familiar with the whole operations, so bear with me.
Sure.
You said you bought this fly car whenever you were talking about that, you wanna leave it running so that, you know, the medications don't get cold. But, do you have a garage availability for, for your fleet, or some of these parked outside, or how does that? Or, if they're running on the road, that's fine, I mean, which was where you want them to be, but...
That's another capital improvement we're looking at, 'cause we definitely have outgrown our, our current facility. But for the most part, the vehicles that are on the road can be kept inside. The other thing that we, we've done this year is that we've put everything in bags and totes that when that vehicle is on the road, we can pull it out of, we can bring the, the equipment inside and put it back in the truck when, when it's going on the road. But primarily, we have two fly cars on the road at any given time, and those both could be parked inside right now. Although, not nicely, but...
Also, to answer your question, so if the fly car is on a call, and we're going, say, to Woodstock, and we're intercepting with the, with the ambulance, and that medic gets out of the vehicle, and in the wintertime, we're gonna leave that, that fly car running so all those medications stay warm. That medic gets in the ambulance in Woodstock, for example, and then goes to the hospital. So, the car will stay running while the medic is not in the fly car.
Some of the stuff in the, the vehicle is overstock or restock, that we don't carry with us on every call. But we carry it in the vehicle, and that's why we try to leave it, make sure that it stays warm when it's on the road.
I, I've never had the opportunity to ride the ambulance, I hope I don't. Though, my mother has, and everything, the service, everybody was there when, when she needs. Sometimes the ambulance, she said, "No, no, no," and she should've took the ride, it would've been in her better interest, it was very difficult to force her to say, "Look, these guys are here, they came and gone before I got to where she was." And so, I appreciate everything that was out there, but it's kinda hard to understand the whole scenario. Now, the funding, but is there insurance funding for a lot of the things that you do, or do you? When you're on a call, that's the last thing you look at, you're gonna make the call. Everything I'm looking at with the surgeries that I've had now with the insurance, I make sure that everything is approved by the insurance company before certain things happen, then all of a sudden, we're, we're fighting with each other, well, this is not covered, that is not covered. But when you guys, you don't have the choice to say, "Well, can we check with your insurance?" How, how does that affect your, your cash flow, have you?
It's insane.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say it's probably the most complicated piece of what happens, and, and Steve can explain.
So, there's definitely a, a lot of different things, and we all know that, like, the Medicare, Medicaid pays different rates than what we can charge. To start with, the state of Connecticut sets our rates, so we can only charge what they tell us we can charge. Now, we can petition them and, and change them, to have them changed, but there's certain percentages that they follow, right? So, the state sets it, and then the insurance companies, you know, do their adjustments. Medicare, we get paid, I, I don't remember the number, the percentage of the amount that we actually get, and Medicaid is even less than that. And then, a, a lot of the insurance companies have copays and whatnot. So, we have a billing company, they do the insurance, they follow up with the patient or whoever's responsible for their portion of the bills, anything, you know, they have their formulas. Anything that doesn't get paid, it goes into collections, and then the collections, the collections agency does their formula and does their thing and tries to collect on it. But there is no guarantee, when you have your surgeries, everything's pre-approved and, and the hospital knows they're getting their money, but we don't.
Well, I make sure, I, I went out of my way to make sure that everything is done, so, but we, we have the time to do that.
Right.
And that's a, you have no time, you have nothing, and...
We don't...
That the copay, that they make the cop, even if they make the, it's bad enough to deal with the insurance company, but then to collect the copay and find where they are, I, I...
You know, that's the, that's, that's the business, you know, we can't deny transport if somebody calls nine-one-one. So, we don't even ask on scene, we do collect data from the hospital about insurance and whatnot on, on our patients, and that's how we start the billing process. But, uh, there is no guarantee, i- if they don't have insurance, we, a lot of times, we end up...
If you look at the packet that we sent to you guys on page two, we kinda detail out the total call volume, but we also show what's billable and what's not billable, and, and understand billable, not collectible. Just because we send a bill doesn't mean it's collectible.
Okay, no, that's why I brought that up.
So, so there's, you know, if, if an ambulance goes to a car accident, we're responding to that call, but it's a refusal, we may not transport, that's not even billable. In some cases, it is, in some cases, it depends on the treatment. But it, but that may not even be billable, so it's a response, it's something we, we have to do, and it's, it's, you know, we need staff to do that. And then there's the billable, but uncollectible. So, you know, I would say, you know, I think if I, if I, I think if I said we bill out, I don't wanna call it write-off, right, because it's just uncollectible, it's not necessarily written off, but I would say there's probably two hundred thousand dollars a month that's uncollectible. Whether it be we didn't bill at all, or we billed and didn't receive it, there's a very high, and, and trust me, the staff is working with that billing company, and we're making sure everything's there, that's... What a tension breaker that was. So, it's certainly complex, a lot of what the administrative staff does is dealing with those, that billing, and making sure that billing is done accurately, and we're collecting as much as possible. It is definitely challenging.
A lot of that is the insurance adjustments too, a lot of that two hundred thousand is insurance adjustments. You know, the state says we can, but us Medicare only pays this, so there's a big separation there.
Yeah, if you were to just look at the billing rate for ambulances, you'd think, "Oh, yeah, this is like print money." It's not true. Just not true.
And that's, that's a fact, that's...
Part, 'cause my family's been in emergency services for a really long time. State overreach, I, I mean, this is becoming really, really a big problem. That's part of the transport problem that we have, is the state just, state needs to back off and let us just run our business.
Does the state, well, they should, but we probably know they don't. Does the state of Connecticut subsidize any of that difference for you, that Medicaid? Is there like any legislation, or has anybody ever tried to make that happen?
So, there is legislation, I'm, Steve, you have to keep me honest, there is legislation that's being proposed to increase, I, I might get this backwards, to make sure that Medicaid is the same level or within ninety percent of Medicare. Medicare pretty much pays, typically pays more, Medicaid pays less, and the state is proposing, talking about, I don't know what state it, level it's at, but they're talking about trying to make sure that one can't be any lower than ninety percent of the other, which could potentially be an impact, but...
So, Medicare is, is the federal level, Medicaid is the state level, right, so the state funding, and they are, there are, there is a bill, propose this legislation to increase the Medicaid to hopefully within ten percent of, of Medicaid, what Medicare pays, which is still less than half, I believe, if I remember correctly, of what we can actually charge.
The state of Connecticut, for many, many years, has decreased Medicaid reimbursements to try to balance the budget, and I believe it's maybe thirty cents or less on the dollar.
So, it, it's horrible.
But then they limit you guys on what you can do.
Correct.
Coming and going. So, I've, I've got a question, and I know, I completely understand the whole, the step process of not having enough call volume to support two full-time ambulances before, and I see what you did with having the, using the medic from ECOG. I, we've done similar situation where I'm at, we basically have two different departments, a mechanical and an auto body, and we get to a point where we have enough work to support another person half-time on one department, but not a full-time and vice versa, so we try to find someone who can fill both. That being said, now that we're moving up to having that, that second ambulance for the twelve hours, how much more call volume do you think you could handle before you would have to reach the next step to bring in a third crew?
So, I think that, you know, I think we would not need to increase to go to a, say, a third ambulance for quite a while. What does that mean, right? What's quite a while, I get it. You know, if, we're handling, Steve, right now, we're handling in Killingly, call volume in Killingly?
Right around three, right around three thousand responses, maybe a little more than that.
Yeah, so if you, sorry.
So, you know, to go, as somebody said, I think, you know, it depends on the day, and that's what the, you know, we have administrative staff during the day and callbacks for. As far as regular call volume, you would have to push the, the four thousand call, forty-five hundred call numbers. Where we're gonna end up looking next, in the next four or five years, are probably the overnight. Right now, it's only one ambulance overnight, you know, already, the, the, the forty minute, we're looking at, at that four hours on the evening. You know, the, the call volume there has, has gone up, we're constantly doing callbacks, the day crews are holding over to cover the night, cover night calls. So, that's why we're trying to start that reach, so the overnight will be next.
And, and again, you know, I don't have all the data to speak to the impact of the transfer, the transfer process, but if that transfer ambulance overnight is not doing anything, they will answer nine-one calls. So, that gives us another opportunity to share with another component of the business, and that's beneficial.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So, of the, you said around three thousand for Killingly, right? What would the ratio be for those between ALS and BLS?
So, we actually have a chart?
Is that in the chart?
Well, the, the chart has the medic on...
Is that in here, I'm sorry?
So, sort of, I don't know if it's gonna answer your question exactly, and again, this, again, this is global.
Yep.
So, if you look at page five... Yeah, if you look at just, well, the medics are global.
Okay.
So, I'd have to pull the medics out for just Killingly, I don't know that we have that data.
No, that would be the ALS, correct?
Correct.
With the medic, because, so we don't have that separate?
No.
'Cause that would be a shared plus with ECOG, correct?
Correct, but I don't have, I, we haven't taken the ALS ambulance and broken it in half, Steve, do you have? So, let me just explain page five, and then Steve can add if he has some additional detail.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, if you look at page five, the middle line is, is Killingly BLS. Hey, it's, yeah, they're not numbered, but it's the fifth page, looks like this.
Here's some numbers, maybe.
Numbers, whatever, just saying.
Note to some...
This one? Okay, got it.
So, that middle line is BLS ambulance in Killingly.
Okay.
And the top line is all of the medic program.
Okay.
So, I don't have the Killingly medic only, we could probably get that for you.
I definitely can get those numbers.
I just don't have it.
Okay, yeah, I would like that.
I know that Killingly runs about forty percent of the ECOG calls, but I don't remember the numbers for the town of Killingly, I apologize, I should've had that on.
No, that's okay, I just, I'm, I'm very specific.
Forty percent's a, a big, big number.
Yeah, it's big.
Of the ECOG calls, so the ECOG runs, we responded to just over three thousand paramedic calls, and forty percent of those were in the town of Killingly.
Now, when you guys...
So, that gives you, what does that, that's what I was...
When you guys took over from American, though, you guys, you bumped your percentage of calls that you actually made, correct?
Correct, so, American was making, I, I shouldn't, I don't know exactly what they were making. We're at about ninety-five, ninety-six percent of the, the paramedic call volume. We're probably at around ninety-four percent of the ambulance volume for the town of Killingly.
Then, now, Scott, you had mentioned thirteen percent, is that thirteen percent of your overall budget is in overtime? Is that what you were saying, or did I?
Thirteen percent of the payroll budget. Payroll. So, that's of payroll.
Now, when we had all met and had the precarious meeting for the transfer, you guys were talking about you had to hire like eleven or twelve people, two, so now you're saying you're, you want, I need some more explanation around how you're able to dedicate another ambulance more time to Killingly when you're still short-staffed, or did you guys hire more people since the last time we talked?
Absolutely, we hired more people.
How many?
The exact number, Steve, do we have?
I, I don't know how much we've hired since.
The way, the way we've, the way we've approached it is, we're... The way, the way we've, the way we've approached it is we're plus or minus from fully staffed. That's kind of the way we speak to it.
You don't know how many employees you have?
No, that, we know how many employees we have.
I apologize. I'm just trying to put this, because I still don't see numbers. I don't see a balance sheet. I don't see a profit and loss. I don't see, you, I'm a little, I wanted numbers, but, so I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to be very professional. I apologize.
Fair enough.
I just have questions. Because, I mean, this is a big ask. This is a big ask.
Mm-hmm, understood.
And you guys are telling me, telling us, I apologize, that you're gonna be giving us more services for the money. But I don't understand how you're able to do that when you were short-staffed. So that's what I'm asking. How many more people do you have to cover what you need right now?
So we've added, Steve, do you want to just go through the full-time, part-time? Because we've not only just added full-time, we've also added part-time. Some dedicated to transfer, some not dedicated to transfer. So.
That was my other question.
It's always a com, there's not, there's never an, an easy answer. I wish there was, but they're always complex. Steve, do you have just some numbers?
I'll come back to you.
So currently, we have nine full-time paramedics, 16 full-time BLS personnel, two part-time paramedics, seven part-time EMTs or BLS, 11 part-EM paramedics and 18 part-EM BLS personnel. When we started this, we were below the numbers we needed for 911, especially on the paramedic side. We were short paramedics. Since then, we're, we're plus two, plus three on the paramedics. And right now, we're only plus one full-time EMT, but we've added part-time EMTs. So that has increased. And the part-EM EMTs have, have increased quite a bit. You know, when we had the volunteers, we had maybe six active volunteers which have remained on. But the part-EMS, we've hired several part-EMS to help fill as needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then the other question I have, you had said, the, if the transfer thingy goes through. So you're gonna have an ambulance dedicated to transfers? If that's not running, then that would be available for 911 calls?
Correct.
So, and this was my, this stuck in my quarrel last time. So you guys are a nonprofit, correct?
Yes.
That's a revenue stream for profit, the transfer?
Well, it's a revenue stream, but it's not for profit.
So it's, so you're still, but you had said, so the last time we went over this, you had said that was a revenue stream and a nonprofit can't be a revenue.
Well, the way, let me define revenue stream for us.
For your overall budget. Because then you wouldn't come to us with this much money if you're gonna be, but you had told me it's totally separate.
So not, you understand that nonprofit or not-for-profit doesn't mean that you don't make money, right?
I obviously mean, know that, but are you gonna run through the steps and books?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just clarifying because I'm, I'm involved in several of that 501(c)(3)'s and.
I, I have my own, yes, go ahead.
It's, it's just one of those situations where I think when we say profitable,
Yes.
It's, we're getting more revenue than we're spending, right? In that particular instance. It doesn't mean that we're actually taking the money and doing something with it that we shouldn't be as a nonprofit.
No, 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 I'm not saying, so, so this is my concern, and I don't know if you were at the last meeting. Are these budget apps, how can you guys show us, we're not paying for the startup for the transfer? That's my, that's what we need to see. That, you're not asking the towns to pay for that startup, for that transfer revenue stream. And that's why we want to see numbers.
So, the, the numbers, and Jason can go over those numbers, but the numbers that present, are presented in this is what it's gonna cost to do this, this system, the Killingley system. That's what it costs us. This is just specific to Killingley. This doesn't include anything with Tri-Town, doesn't include anything with NICO. It has nothing to do with those numbers. This is not our overall budget. This is a Killingley budget. And that's what we have tried to do with all of our revenue streams, is separate them in that way. And that's why, like, our bal, our balance sheet is, includes everything. And it'll mean absolutely nothing to Killingley, because you can't tell, it's hard to tell what is just Killingley versus the Tri-Town or NICO, because the payroll costs are all together. The, so we broke it down to what it costs us to cover X amount of hours in the town of Killingley on a, on a Killingley ambulance.
So.
And a lot of this doesn't even include the standbys, the extra hours on the standbys. Jason could, could go more into that.
If you look at the sheet that we've shown with our total expenses being about 1.4 million, our total expenses corporate, company-wide are more like 2.6, right? So this is truly a, and I'm, I'm guessing without having the number in front of me on the 2.6, but
It's more than three.
This is, this is strictly the Killingley portion.
So maybe seeing the bigger overall picture would make more sense for us.
So, I understand that ask. I have to think about how we would present that. Because that's not necessarily Killingley's responsibility. It's not.
Well, you, you, but you have to justify why this much of a jump in one year. So if we saw the overall picture, not a snippet with, you know, partial data.
Well, I think we could go through, I think we could go through how we.
This is a big ask.
I think we could go through how we calculated your number a little bit more in detail.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Rather than the entire organization, I think we could drill a little bit more into our budget process for Killingley.
Well, I, I think if we look on the last page, page seven on.
The front?
Yep, where you see your 22, 23 proposed, you have your 22, 23 actual, which is projected through the end of this current fiscal year. Then we have our 23, 24 request. So in 22, 23, we have our projected end-of-the-year payroll costs, non-payroll costs. So our total expenses, our billing, the 110,000 we get from the town, and it shows that we're short $335,000 right now for the town of Killingley. These are town of Killingley numbers only.
While we're on that page, I do have one question. You had talked about, so basically, right now, we have one 24-hour ambulance for, dedicated for Killingley. And we have another one which is a BLS, but we share the medic from NICO for ALS. And we're stepping up to, basically you're bringing in one more employee, you're gonna bring in a, a medic full-time. And you're increasing from eight hours to 12.
So that, that ambulance, the second ambulance is an EMT and a paramedic.
Yep.
Right? So right now, when we break out the budgets, that EMT would be paid for through the, the Killingley budget. The paramedic is paid for through the, the NICO budget. So it's a shared resource that way. To break it apart, we would take the paramedic out of that equation. But now to fill that ambulance, we have to add an EMT to it.
For 12 hours.
For 12 hours. And that's what we're asking.
An EMT and a paramedic?
No.
Okay, so just an EMT?
Just, just an EMT.
Okay.
12 hours, 24, 12 by 7, all year.
Okay. And, but that crew right now runs eight hours a day or 12?
12.
12.
Okay. Because the thing I'm trying to figure out is, on the page seven, the budget page, it says an additional 16 hours, and I'm just trying to figure out where that 16 comes from.
So, we are gonna put that E, we are gonna put that resource on for 16 hours. We're charging Killingley for 12 of it. We're gonna fund the other four. And the reason we're gonna fund the other four is we wanna get that E, that other resource to stay till 10 at night. So Killingley's gonna fund 6 to 6, we're gonna fund 6 to 10. We're gonna end up with 16 more hours. Now, at, today, at 6 o'clock, that first BLS resource goes home and the medic goes into the fly car from 6 to 10. So we're gonna do two EMTs, EMR, two, two BLS resources from 6 to 6. And then at 6, we're gonna take one of those resources, put them back in the ambulance, and we're gonna share the resource till 10.
Take the paramedic and.
Put the paramedic. So what we're doing now, 6 to 6, we're gonna do 6 to 10. So basically, you'll end up with a shared ambulance from 6 to 10, a dedicated ambulance 6 to 6. So it's another step. And we're gonna fund that four-hour piece. And that's why the budget in here comes out to a negative, because we've calculated that resource, but we're not asking you to pay for it.
So are you asking NICO to pay that additional?
We're gonna fund it, we're gonna fund it for the year and see what happens with billing. We can fund that for the year.
Uh, so, stupid thing. I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask it or whatever, but last time you were here, we were talking about the agreements, Mary, is we only have a gentleman's agreement. There was some talk of if we wanted a real agreement, it would be more money. So I just thought, I didn't know if anyone had any appetite or when that would come up for a real agreement to say, we have dedicated ambulances and we're gonna sign on. Because this is more money. So I don't know if anyone had any appetite for that, Mary. I don't know if you could, you know, if that's your thing, throw that out there.
So we can definitely, you know.
I think we do have an agreement, correct? We've, we've located our copy and there isn't.
Oh, you have located your copy? I haven't seen that.
It's, it's light on specific.
I would say that we would, if we do have an, I would send that to legal and have us do a revision on that before we activate for July 1 moving forward. So we would, we would do a new contract. Make sure that everything was spelled out as a current.
Because now is the time before we.
I don't, I have not seen a contract. They, that's the first I'm hearing that somebody's found a contract.
I don't know if anyone has any appetite. I'm just throwing that out there.
I think it would be a good idea to have, especially considering the, the increased ask, to have a new contract, or at least a revised contract in place.
So what would we do? How would we do that process with timing and stuff to do with the ask? Sorry, Mary.
Okay, it gives Jen time to go on. So, uh, yeah, I would wait until we get through, you know, the budgetary process to determine where we're at on that. I can, if I can get a copy of what they have, I can send that over to our legal team and start kind of cooking through that process. And then depending on how this is deliberated and determined, we'd determine if there's additional changes. So I, I can just begin the process with our legal team.
Oh, I'm just thinking about the ask. So would we have to give the ask before we have the contract? Or would, could you say, yeah, this, we're probably gonna give this gift, but we would like to see the contract?
I think part of it would be, we'd have to see the contract that's in place first and have legal look at that to see where we're at.
Right, yes, that's likely not possible, right? Because you need to make your, so this, the council's gonna have to deliberate on the budget and determine what your number is no later than 10 days after the public hearing. There's not a way to complete that deliberation process and the creation of a contract in that shorter time span. For you, then come back and review it, before you make a determination on whether or not you wanna fund this. What I can do is start the, if I get a copy of what they have, I can set, I can start the process of reviewing what the existing is, fold in what the existing services are into that contract, and then determine what we, you know, if, if a change occurs, then we can make the modification to what that contract would potentially be.
I mean, wouldn't there be a way to store, to say no to the, the ask, which not a permanent no, and put the money in contingency and then grant it after the contract? We can, we can do what we want with contingency, right?
Correct. So the council can decide to increase contingency amount or whatever, and then subsequently decide to appropriate funds from contingency. Yes.
So the ask from us is you need a draft of what we have, you need a copy of what we have currently?
Yeah, and, and we can provide that. I mean, it, it essentially says, we'll provide, that's it. There's no.
We'll provide services to the town.
There's no quantified anything in it.
Yeah, there's no, there's no breakdown of what that, what that means.
There's no resources listed at all.
So I just have one question. Without the additional, what you guys are offering to bring to the table for Killingley for going forward, what would your, have you determined what your ask would be this year without that additional hours and EMT?
Yeah, so if we just did, I, I can give you the, do you have the exact?
Yep. So, so what we're asking for is the, the 16, you know, hours a day, seven days a week. So if you want just to keep the services as is without that additional EMT for the 16 hours, our ask would be 202,000. That is for one EMT for 12 hours a day, seven days a week, which is what we're providing right now with the 24 by 7.
Now, that would.
And that's what we have right now.
Correct.
Now, does that include the pay increases?
That includes pay increases, yes.
So it'd be another 98,000?
Uh, from 110 to 202, correct.
What's 2,000 on friends?
Rounding errors.
And this is, this is, it kinda, we, we have to, we're here to, to watch over the town's money. So by, like you were saying about, you know, show us, show us why, show us in more detail than a, than a grant. What, what's your, what's your, you know, what is your, what is your call volume for the year? What is your call volume delta for year to year to year to year? What is your, what is your billable call volume? What are you getting through your call volume? You know what I mean? What is the, what is your take? What is, what do you, you know, what are you getting reimbursed?
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's all.
If we don't, if we don't get that information, then we're, we're blindly spending money.
I think that's here though. I'm not sure. So call volume, right? We have that included in, in, in the chart. If you need specific numbers breaking out off the chart.
Yeah, $90,000 just to, to increase, to increase pay, right?
Yeah.
From last year to this.
Was more than just increased pay. It's also funding our capital program to replace the ambulances. Increased costs of our maintenance on the ambulances, increased fuel costs, increased medical supplies.
But this wasn't any other year? I mean, the, the fuel has gone and doubled, but what, what about everything else? You know what I mean? What, I mean, show us what it's, show us what the increases are. That's, you know, it's, you guys are nonprofits, so what's, what's the hurt of showing that to, at least us, so we know that we're spending the town's people's money efficiently?
Yeah, I mean.
That's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah. And, you know, part of developing this was to do that. And if we haven't given enough detail, we can think about how to do that. I mean, at some point, you know, at some point, yes, we're nonprofit. But there is some level of, of negotiation to try to figure out services and, and get everything to work and.
What is the additional service gonna do for the, for the town?
So reduce time to patient, right?
Do we have an issue with that now?
So.
Is the call volume increased to, to, to make the, to warrant this change?
Yeah, so call volume is just about back to pre-COVID levels. And there's a lot of calls that are being serviced from the hospital.
So you had savings for two years?
No, but billing dropped through the floor. It's crazy. I got a lot of head nods over there. So, you know, that call volume is just about rebounded. It's gonna continue. You know, we think 200 to 300 calls a year consistently will add to, to the environment. Obviously, depending on the growth of the town and things of that nature. But that's kind of what we're preparing for. And, and a lot of this is, our staff are some of the busiest staff in Northeastern Connecticut. And balancing out these two ambulances, you know, I don't want to say it doesn't give to the public, it does, but it also makes our staff retainable. Right? Because instead of having a, an EMS member run nine calls back-to-back-to-back, they'll be able to alternate those BLS ambulances and swap calls and, and do every other call, and be able to come back, get their reports done, get their stuff restocked, not responding to a call, and then from the aim, from the hospital, responding to another call, and do that for four hours. And not necessarily be able to restock and, and be at the top of their game, right? We want our staff at the top of their game, and they, they need a break to do that. And that's, to me, that's not, that's not uncalled for, to make sure our staff has a break in between calls to be ready for the next call.
Essentially, you're doubling, you're a manpower, correct?
So for BLS, I wouldn't say doubling. It, it's really operational in nature, right? So right now, if there's a, a BLS call, the BLS ambulance goes. If there's an ALS call, the ALS ambulance goes. And if the BLS ambulance is already out, the ALS ambulance will cover a BLS call. And that starts to pull an ALS resource away from an ALS call. So it becomes very inefficient, very unelegant, right? Two BLS resources. very inefficient, very unelegant, right? Two BLS resources, they do every other call. Whether it's ALS or BLS, they do every other call. The medic meets them and turns that BLS ambulance into an ALS ambulance, just like the medic does for every town in the area, right? When that ALS unit goes to Brooklyn, they turn that BLS ambulance into an ALS ambulance.
Now, do you find that-
So we're going to do the same thing here.
Do you feel that the mutual aid is going to increase? Because if our town increases mutual aid, it's going to increase as well.
So I would say that we would require mutual aid less, and we would provide mutual aid more. To the, to the amount that we will do, I don't know, right? We think we're going to drop about 150 mutual aid calls coming into Killingley, so we will just handle them because we'll have more availability. How many calls we pick up in other towns, I don't know. I'll say that the, the medic will be more available as well, because if that shared resource is on a BLS call, that medic's tied up. Even though the medic's not doing ALS stuff, they're tied up. The fact that that ALS, that medic is in, is in a fly car, that medic can now go to where they need to be. They're, they're more dedicated. So, again, if you had a fleet of ambulances, you know, if we had seven BLS, you could see how that would balance. We're just to the point where we want to get to two, so we can balance. And that's a, you know, that's a, if, if this is something that you guys don't feel you can fully fund, if you don't feel it's appropriate, you're welcome to do as you see fit. Certainly, that's your purview. And we will do the best we can with the resources we have.
Jason. Steve, about, just kind of help the people that don't do, don't know about the ambulance service. About how long does one call usually average accrue?
From the town of Killingley, I would probably say about an hour or two, an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Last time I ever have to give any disclaimer, thank God. So I, I no longer work for KB ambulance, so there is zero conflict of interest with me asking any questions now. And having worked there for 11, almost 11 and a half years alongside of the staff, I understand completely how dedicated they are to serving the town of Killingley and doing their best for the, for the patients there. And, you know, it's been, you know, obviously a great privilege to be, have been able to be part of that team. So I have some, some basic questions to ask there. So what's the total call volume for KB overall?
For-
Agency-wide?
Paramedics included?
Uh, yeah, everybody.
So for the town of Killingley, it's right around 3,000. For the town of, for the Pofford ambulance, it's-
Six, 30, 40 something?
About 700 responses. And the NICAG responses, and so this is where it gets money, and I didn't separate it. The NICAG responses are around 3,000 as well, 3,200. But some of those are Killingley responses, so it's a dual response.
Correct. Obviously, I know that a little bit better, but it's good that you explained it for the rest of them, because we could sit here and talk EMSE's all night long, and not, nobody here will understand a word we're saying. So, how many non-transports do you have out of all those calls?
Can I flip it the other way? In the town of Killingley, it's around 2,600 transports. The town of Pa, the Pofford ambulance or Titeon ambulance, about 500 transports. Last year, they did 500 transports. And the NICAG paramedic, again, it's flawed because it's some Killingley as well. The paramedics transport about 2,400 calls a year.
And obviously, in your letter, you noted your funding sources, which when this letter was written, was back in, I'm assuming, early December, so you didn't include the transfer because that wasn't really a thing on your radar right away. So you have five funding sources then, essentially. Insurance, which you know as 1, 1.1 million. The town of Killingley, if, if the town, the taxpayers agree to the additional 131% increase there of 145,000, which bring it up to 255,000. Pofford, Hamford, Hampton, Hesford, I get a little tripped up on mine. That, I actually reached out to one of them, they, they told me the number that they're going up, which totals between the three towns, 273,000 dollars respectively. NICAG, they've just mentioned that you're looking for a 17% increase. And with that, my quick question is, when was the last time you guys ever got a raise for paramedic services from NICAG?
So, last year, we went up just 2%, because at the time, we were doing okay.
Yeah.
The, the gas hadn't doubled yet, and the expenses hadn't gone crazy. The year before that, we had gone up 10 dollars per call, which I don't know what the percentage is there. The original contract began January 1, 2017, was set at a 95 dollars a call for, per transport. Some things have changed over the years, but basically it's remained pretty much the same. Until two years ago, we went up to 10 dollars, which is less than 10%. And then the 2%, and then this year, we were looking to go a little bit higher to help recover some of the costs of the, you know, some of our supplies have, have doubled in price.
Correct.
You know, the fuel has almost doubled in price. And the mileage has gone up on these, on these vehicles because of the call volume and the response locations. And, you know, so we are, you know, we are going up across the board, unfortunately. You know, we wish we didn't have to. The paramedic side has always been paid. There was never volunteer paramedics. But still, it's harder and harder to retain. After the budget proposed last year, we did across-the-board raises at KB. And then, you know, we'd like to go up again to help, to help compensate and be comparable.
So, yeah, in the NICAG meeting, which I'm a liaison for the town of Killingley to that, they mentioned the 17% increase that KB's looking for, for the next coming year. And then the fifth source of funding is De Kimball Hospital currently. Have they, have you guys been having any issues with billing with them?
No, we're paid in full to date.
Okay, excellent. Are you currently billing for refusals? I know the state recently has made that change, that there's a possibility for services to do that.
Yeah, I think it was about two years ago, the state put a, they regulate all the price, all the, what we can charge. They put in place a, a charge for treat and release. And you have to do a treatment and do a, an assessment on, on your patient. So Medicare will not recognize a lift assist as a treatment. So if you do a, if you do an assessment and you lift them off the floor, that's not a treatment. Some of the insurance companies will. And so they will pay some of that. So a lot of, not a lot of, but some of those refusals, we are starting to recover some, some funds on. Obviously, it's not the full amount. And it's still a challenge. But yes, the short answer is yes, we are billing for, for the refu, for the-
Yeah, obviously.
Treat and release.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, it's a tricky, the guidance has been very, it's about as clear as mud, so I completely understand that. So what is your current return rate from your insurance, from your billing company there?
I don't have a good answer. The, the last time, the last numbers I remember were 92%, but I'm not sure that's, that's an exact number. And that is, that's not 92% on what we can bill.
Correct.
That's 92% after the adjustment, after the Medicare, after, you know. So it's 92% of the actual amount in the end. So he had mentioned the 200,000 a month or more, it's probably more than that.
Probably.
That, that is adjusted down from what we actually can bill. So obviously, 200,000 of whatever the month is, is, is more than 92%. You know, that, that means we're not collecting 92% of what we charge. It, we don't. We don't collect 92% of what we can bill because the, the insurance company isn't, Medicare and Medicaid won't allow it.
Right. But of those calls billed, you are able to get 92% of them with some kind of reimbursement?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
So typically, in a couple of the meetings, and, you know, we will collect potentially, and this is organization-wide, we'll collect in the 160K range maybe for a month, and we may write off 8 to 10,000 dollars?
Right.
Of uncollectible?
I, I recall Chief Daggett many years ago, so this is going, obviously going back, telling me just one year alone was 300,000 dollars and bills written off.
Written off.
And obviously, that's for, especially for those who have hardships and things like that. You know, I, I definitely can appreciate the fact that you do that. Do you know by chance, because I looked up your 990 forms, what the fund balance is currently for KB?
Be more specific, fund balance for what, what we have in the bank?
On your 9, yeah, on your 990 forms there, you, you note what your fund balance is for the year going forward. Over the last three years, the last three years that were noted there, really the difference was about 23,000 dollars positive. So what you noted in your, on that was 1.8 million, as in that's what you had moving forward?
Yeah, so, so do you want to go through what's in the accounts from a, you know, basically cash on hand?
Yeah, we have two accounts. We have one operating account, where all the, the month-to-month, you know, the day-to-day operating expenses come out of. And then we have one account that we're using for capital expenses. And that's been allocated for ambulance purchases and for any kind of building upgrades that may be needed in the future.
One thing I will go back to, and I almost forgot to mention this there. I think it is good that we have a contract in place because there is legislation that is out there currently. And I hope it doesn't pass, to be honest. I, I know that this would devastate all the EMS system within the state of Connecticut. But there is a legislation out there that would allow the towns the ability to, at, on their, at a whim, change ambulance providers. So a contract, especially one that has, you know, some language in it that gives a little bit longevity, helps out just in case something like that does go through. I mean, it's, it's a terrible bill. I really hope it goes, it fails, but we definitely, and-
And we would be certainly willing to work with you guys to do something a little more long-term with some consistent increases, and, and we can negotiate that. And we'd be more than happy to do that.
Right. On page two of your letter, this is where I have some confusion. So you note that you're getting 50% of your calls billed in this letter. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our call volume versus- What we're, our call volume versus what we're billing for.
Okay.
That is, that is, that is accurate.
Okay. Because on the next page, it looks like you're about 75, 25, which is pretty accurate to the area. I've, I've actually talked to some other chiefs. This is why I'm a little confused on your, these two graphs don't seem to meld together.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to review it and see if, I think this non-billable includes probably refusals.
Right.
And this other graph probably doesn't include refusals. It's more calls that are non-billed through, you know, uncollectible.
Okay. And looking at that last page too, again, you did kind of answer this question already, because I, I know the chairman already asked us about that 16 hours there, and you're only looking for 12 hours from the town of Killingley. But as I was looking at that again, I have a question for you. You know, this year, you're looking for 131% increase over the last year. And you noted in your proposed initially a $30,000 loss, and you're now saying it's a $300,000 loss. For next year, you're looking at almost a $50,000 loss. How do we know we're not going to be looking at a 200% increase next year?
So I would say the components that were missing from the budget process is long-term capital expense. There was no, it, really the budget that had been given in the past was payroll. There was no ambulance replacement. There was no building funding. None of those long-term capital expenses were allocated or attributed into the last, into the previous budgets. So that's where those increases are coming from. If you have to replace an ambulance every eight to 10 years, you have to collect a certain amount of money upfront each year to put into a fund and retain those balances to replace that ambulance. So that's the majority of the increase.
Okay.
As well as some, some funding for staff.
Yeah. But KB was able to do that right straight along until the last year?
Absolutely. Well, so not up to the last year, but if you look at the deterioration of volunteer, you know, if you take 25% of our staff and make them volunteer, we wouldn't be here.
Right. And I, and I understand that, because obviously volunteers save you money.
Absolutely.
But at the same point, I just, I do have some concerns that you're, you're saying that there's going to be a loss already for next year. And there's going to be, and my concern now is, is there going to be an even heftier bill next year? Ask, or ask?
So that loss is based on what we're agreeing to fund?
Right, I understand that.
If we come back next year and say, we'd like you to fund from 6:00 at night to 10:00 PM, we can have that conversation.
And, and don't get me wrong, I do agree with two ambulances, having, again, worked for KB. I understand the need, you know, when, I know, I can't remember which counselor here asked about the, when you need to go up to three. I know the town of Vernon does over 6,000 calls a year, and they run three ambulances all day long. I mean, I, I definitely get where call volume starts to play into making sure that we take care of our people, you know, take care, you, you guys are able to take care of your people, and making sure that they're not burnt out. Same thing with getting the paramedic out of the fly car, into a fly car out of that. You can now swap off the paramedics, so one paramedic's not being burnt out while the other one, I'm not saying that they sit around, but there's, there's days that one just kind of does. There's some days that the crews just sit around, you know?
Aftershock availability, not reaction.
Those are the nice days. We enjoy those days. And I do appreciate the fact that you came back to us with that overtime. The only thing I would say, and I respectfully disagree with you on, is that the comparison with the Thompson versus what you're doing with transfers, it's a pretty similar comparison when it comes to overtime, the, the cost of that. Because the only difference is you were able to hire people. But 13% of overtime last year is, you know, I, I did some numbers, ran some numbers myself. One person alone almost did 1,000 hours of overtime. So that's, that's a lot of people. And making sure that adequate staffing levels and things like that, obviously the biggest, biggest thing, is to make sure that, again, you don't want people burnt out because they're just overworked.
Yeah, we totally agree.
Jason.
Thank you.
So, so, so you're figuring an ambulance is going to probably end up needing to be replaced every seven, seven or so years?
That was planned, and that's, that is in our budget now.
Yeah. What, what exactly does, because I think the rest of the council, Ray probably understands, and I don't understand how expensive equipment is, but what is the approximate cost to replace an ambulance, a new ambulance?
So the typical ambulances that we run, we have run for the last, whatever, 70, 80 something years, is about 240,000.
And then the equipment in that ambulance, Steve?
If it's an-
I don't have an exact number.
Yeah, and if it's ALS, it's got more equipment, and it's more expensive and-
The power loads, so I'll get into it. The power load equipment in the back, so power load stretchers, our hydraulic stretchers, and a hydra lift to put the stretcher into the ambulance. What that does is saves our workers' comp because it decreases the back injuries, right? So-
And is required.
The-
The power, or some kind of load system is required per triple K specs. We're actually required by law to have those.
You have to have a loading system, but it doesn't have to be power.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, some kind of loading system.
But it doesn't have to be a power load.
Correct, yeah. But regardless, not cheap systems.
Yeah, regardless. This, yes, we have to have a loading system and a, and a, you know, a stretcher that locks into the, into the, to the ambulance, and it has to fit X, Y, Z way. And the newer requirements on how they lock in, I don't even know them all. But, you know, the, the power loads that we purchase now fit on the striker. Whether we do a striker power load or not, you know, the manual stretchers meet those loading requirements. you know, the manual stretchers meet those loading requirements. But we, we do use the power loads. The power load stretcher is about a twenty thousand dollar stretcher. The power load system that loads the stretcher into the ambulance with under power is also about twenty thousand, about twenty-five thousand dollars. And then it has to be installed into the ambulance as well. So it's about thirty thousand dollars to put the power load loader into the ambulance. It saves a lot of workers' comp, it saves a lot of back injuries. Loading an ambulance, loading a stretcher into an ambulance obviously requires, without the power load requires lifting, so somebody has to hold that, the end of that stretcher. There is a, a load system, as Ray had mentioned, you know, the power loads, you push a button and it pulls the wheels up. The manual ones, you squeeze and somebody has to manually lift them.
And that system, Steve, is approximately what in cost?
I honestly don't know because I haven't priced those out.
A range, twenty to thirty to forty thousand dollars?
I can actually answer that because I recently met with our striker rep there and who services the area, very sweet young lady. And she, she quoted us around thirty thousand dollars roughly. That's without trade-in or anything.
When you say us, Ray, who's us?
Uh, that's, one of the agencies I work for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just to follow up, Ray, on one of the questions you asked, right? You said seventy-five percent. And I did misspeak when I said fifty percent, right? The graph looks like fifty percent, but those two, those two charts are different logarithms and scale. That scale starts at two thousand, not at zero. So they're both the same.
I see, but written down, I believe I read fifty percent. Yeah, right here, nearly half the calls dispatched are not able to be billed. It's the last line under statistics.
So that, that's, that's an error, that statement's an error, the graph is correct.
Oh, thank you.
So, so basically you're talking almost, probably closer to three hundred and fifty thousand to outfit an ambulance the way it needs to be? Approximately?
Yes.
And if it's going to go seven years, so you really need to be piling fifty thousand a year then?
Yeah, and that's what this budget has. It has that, we've taken that three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar ambulance, we've divided it out by the lifespan, call it eight years, and we've built that into this budget. We've done the same thing for Trittown and we've done the same thing for NICOG. Obviously, NICOG's a little different because those are fly cars. The fly cars are not three hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece.
They don't last as long though, right? Those flight cars are replaced more often. And some of the paramedic gear that's in those flight cars, I think a monitor's forty to fifty thousand dollars for a cardiac monitor. So there's some large expenses there as well.
So, so you put them on a depreciation schedule? Is that what you're saying? Your ambulances? How often are they PMed? How lo, how often do they go through an overall preventive maintenance?
So the ambulances are serviced every six thousand miles by a certified ambulance dealer. And in that service, he, he does a, whatever the hundred-point inspection is that he goes through. And then obviously anytime we have any kind of issue, we bring them back to them.
Now, I have one question, especially after conversations that myself and the vice chair have had with some of the fire chiefs. Have you looked into, and the age of your fleet, it might not even be feasible, refurbishing existing units rather than replacing?
So this time around, we did not for the, the new purchase of the twenty twenty-four. And the reason for that is because we were replacing a van ambulance, a van-style ambulance, so that we can't refurbish that box. The next vehicle to be refurbished, or to, to be replaced in the fleet, it could be something that we would look at. That was a new box. The, one of them already was refurbished, so it's already been remounted on a new chassis. And, you know, obviously, and I, so the remounts are usually a way to cut costs. You take the box off an old chassis and put it on a new chassis. The biggest challenge right now is the chassis is harder to get than the boxes and they, and probably more expensive than the box, you know? And that's, you know, the challenge across the board. But it's definitely something that we will be looking at the next time around. You know, for the transfer side, we're probably going to look at van-style ambulances again. In the nine-one-one system, those are not real conducive to emergency calls. The box styles that we're, we're used to seeing and that KB has run for several years are much more efficient, not, I wouldn't say efficient, much more user-friendly for, for the crews and, and for critical calls. You know, the vans, you can only get to one side of your patient when there's a critical call and you need all hands working. In the back of a van, you can't use three people. You can only use two really effectively. In the boxes, you can use at least three, if not four or five if you need it. So I've always, you know, pushed to, to find the best way to, to get those boxes. For the transfer side, maybe not.
And one of the last ambulances that we did replace, it was a used purchase, so we didn't do a complete new vehicle. So it's new to us, low mileage diesel, very good quality, had it inspected and checked, and it's doing well. And it's doing way better than the ambulance that it replaced, which seemed to be in the shop all the time, which was why we replaced it.
So back to the contract. To me, it seems like if you were going to do a contract, say for this year, it would be very clear. We would get one twenty-four-seven BLS ambulance, one twelve-hour BLS ambulance, and then four more hours of ALS ambulance. And we'd be given two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars this year. I don't know how other people feel, so it wouldn't be, how open would you be, like in the next week or so, if everybody decided they were on board, to writing a commitment letter to doing that contract? With those terms?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue looking into doing that. Obviously, we would, we would run that proposal by our legal as well and, and make sure there's no gaps, as, as such, you'd want to do the same thing. I think from a legal perspective, which I'm, I'm not, I would just say we're open to it. I don't know what types of issues there might be where that might.
Probably wouldn't be binding, but we'd have it next year if we didn't get what we wanted.
As kind of a, a draft or, yeah, I don't know what you would call it, or legally what that would mean.
A commitment letter with, with those terms saying that's what we're going to work on, those specific terms that you're talking about now. Because it doesn't seem to be in question what you want and what you're going to provide. So we got, we can talk, you guys, because I don't know what people think. Okay, thank you.
I think the issue would be you can't, you can't commit it.
What do you mean by that? I'm just not clear.
So your, your ambulances that you're going to have are essentially going to be used, could be used for, for other towns. So they're not going to be, you can't put something in contract in black and white and say, we're going to supply you with this and we're going to supply you with this.
So.
That's not going to be a consistent time that you, so they're really not dedicated to Killingley. It's probably, you know, the workflow of Killingley, I understand, is going to be more, but you're still going to be utilizing those services for other services.
No, I don't believe, I don't believe so. I'm not, I'm not sure. No, absolutely, and we do. So, so let me, let me walk through it. I want to make sure it's clear. We have five ambulances. Now, we may rotate them, right? So in order, the Pomford ambulance sits a lot more than Killingley ambulance does, so to balance out mileage, we may swap ambulances to keep our fleet, right? Does that make sense? Right, to keep the hours in, in a place where we need them to be. But there is a single dedicated ambulance in Pomford that's one of the five. Two of the five are dedicated to Killingley and are in Killingley. The third one is a, is a ALS-BLS mix. That one is shared. That can be out of Killingley, it can be in Killingley. The last one is being used for transport. So today, there are three ambulances in Killingley, one of which is shared with NICOG, three. So you have one dedicated, one shared, and the last one is like a callback ambulance. If there was a third call, a crew would, you know, we could page out a crew, and if that crew was available, that would be a third ambulance. That's today, that's every day, that's consistent, it's dedicated. You have two dedicated, I'll, I'll say you have two staffed. You really have three that are in Killingley. So you have two that are staffed. Does that make sense?
I think I know where Mr. Wayhead was going. You're, you're referencing like the mutual aid. Where we may have, we have two crews for Killingley, but there's a mutual aid call, then you're going outside of town. So I think.
They're not dedicated to Killingley.
So.
If, if there's, if there's an emergency, you go to the emergency.
Yeah, so let me.
It would be hard to put it on black and white.
I, I think for the most part, you can even incorporate that in a contract, and I, I think they probably have had that before. Because every town that I know of responds mutual aid to surrounding towns. We all have mutual aid agreements. And I'm sure other towns, maybe not in the northeast corner, but like Vernon probably has a, has a contract, and they go mutual aid as well. So it is, it's a Killingley resource, and it's a Killingley dedicated vehicle that could be called out mutual aid. Just like if, if both of our ambulances are tied up, we call in Mortlake Mutual Aid.
If, if Brooklyn called Killingley and said, we need your help, the mutual aid agreement is Killingley agreeing to help Brooklyn. You would use a Killingley dedicated resource to provide that help because you were asked for it. And through the mutual aid agreement, we've agreed to do it. You know, if there's a bus accident in Plainfield, we need a lot of ambulances, and they come from all over the region. And that's just how the, that's how you get more help than you could ever staff for. So there's dedicated from a contractual standpoint, and mutual aid is kind of in that agreement. Whereas we wouldn't just put two ambulances in Pomford because we felt like it that day. Pomford only gets one. But if Pomford had a bus accident, Brooklyn's going, we're going, Killingley's going, you know, everybody's going to go help based on the criticality of the call. Does that, does that answer, did I, I just want to make sure it's clear. If you have any other questions, I'm glad to answer them.
No, it's just a contract exclusion, that's all.
Yeah, the contract would just speak to mutual aid clause. That's easy.
One question while we're talking about mutual aid. As far as the calls that you cover for other towns and then other towns coming to cover here, on mutual aid calls, does there tend to be a different percentage that you actually recover as far as billing? Or is it pretty consistent across the board, no matter whether it's calls in town or you're doing mutual aid out of town?
I mean, Steve can add to it, but it's based on the insurance of the person you're providing the care to. Just like it's provided, just like it's the insurance of anybody you'd ever provide care to. The difference is, if, you know, if we go to Brooklyn, I'm just using Brooklyn because they're the nearest kind of cross. If we go to Brooklyn, we bill that patient, but we don't bill Brooklyn.
Yeah.
We trade because when we need Brooklyn's help, they come and service our customers and they bill our customer, but they don't charge us. It's, it's a, it's a shared agreement that we help each other.
Whoever provides the service bills, bills the cost.
Correct. So we do, we do capture the bill.
Whether it's Killingley, Putnam.
We do the same for.
I think kind of where I was going was, are there surrounding towns that the, you have more people that don't have insurance that are covering it, that you're doing mutual aid for as opposed to what you see here?
So demographics matter, right? And I would say, based on what we've seen from Pomford, Hampton, Eastford, what we've seen in Thompson, what we've seen here, I would say Killingley is, is pretty low on the recovery rate for billing compared to other towns in the area.
So our, our payer mix for the town of Killingley is about thirty percent Medicaid, thirty percent Medicare, twenty percent insured, and ten percent no, no coverage or self-pay. Those are the number, last numbers I remember off the top of my head, but it, it's about sixty percent of, of Medicaid, Medicare, which unfortunately is the lowest recovery. You know, other towns, other surrounding towns, Mooseup is probably comparable to that, Putnam is probably comparable to that. Thompson was probably comparable. Putnam, Woodstock, Hampton, Eastford is probably less than sixty percent for those Medicaid, Medicare's. You know, the, the true insurance is probably a little higher.
So you're covering more per call, but they have way less calls. So again, an idle ambulance is expensive.
Yep. The reason why I was asking that was because of the fact you talked about you plan on taking over more of the calls in town that would be mutual aid. Now, if we have a lower recovery rate here, is that something you took into consideration when you were putting together this budget?
Yeah, we used our average collection rate to calculate that. And, and what we're hoping to do through some very complex work that we're going to work on over the next year is to understand the recovery rate in each of our business units. Right now, we're using our billing company's average, which is across the whole organization, which doesn't necessarily speak to that demographic component. But it's what we have, and we're going to try to make it a little better. It's what we have today.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Grandowski?
So me, I wasn't part of all the discussions, so I just wanted to leave this on a little bit. Now, reading on, I don't know what page, it says, half of the calls dispatched. Are unable to be billed and are either refusals or standby incidents. Now, if you go out and there's a refusal, so you get nothing on that, how, how does that happen? How do you get in that situation?
If you go to a car accident, a car accident is called in as a two-car accident. You get there, the people are out talking, walking around, they say, I want to go to the hospital. We had to respond to that call, but nobody went to the hospital. We didn't treat, we didn't transfer. It's a call, but we don't bill for it.
How do you get called out to that call, right?
It, it, it's because no one knew no one was hurt. It, it's, it looked bad. It looked bad, but it wasn't.
So several, several different ways we, we get called to calls that we don't transport. One of those is, is through nine-one-one. Somebody calls nine-one-one for a car accident, whatever, says, hey, I think somebody's hurt. We show up and nobody's hurt. Medical alarms are another big one that we go out for. The, the button goes off, they can't reach the subscriber, we get dispatched, we get on scene, the patient's like, I didn't push it, I don't know what happened. I don't want to go to the hospital. So that's another one. Lift assists. We'll go out for a lift assist where they slid out of their chair or tripped over something on the rug, and they just want help getting up off the floor. A lot of times the fire departments will do that, but the fire departments are decreasing the volunteerism as well. It's a strain on them as well. They have a resource in town that's always there, and that's the ambulance. So a lot of the, a lot of the fire departments are either starting us right away or not going at all and starting us instead to cover those, those, quote, medical calls, because in theory, if they fell off the floor, they should be assessed, right? So we go, we assess, we lift them up off the floor. Medicare doesn't see that as a treatment, so Medicare won't pay us for that. Some other insurance companies will, will pay for that lift, but Medicare won't. I'm trying to think if there's any other presumptions. So cardiac arrest, although we can charge for treatments on cardiac arrest now.
So maybe, maybe my question is, if I come upon something, am I supposed to say, I need an ambulance? If I do that, then you come in, so might I, I get you out there on the cause of you not.
But that's okay, that's part of the business. We, we're, you know, EMS is, we're there in case, right? So we're there in case something's wrong. There's not always something wrong, but if there was, we would have been there. And that's okay. That's part of the business.
Something to be said about educating the public about what is worthy of a nine-one-one call. I think car accidents are not one of them. If somebody has a car accident, if you see a car accident, you're going to, you're going to call. If you see somebody lying down on the sidewalk and you say, hey, are you okay? And they don't answer you, you're going to call nine-one-one. Right? That's what you should do. But there definitely are some private residence calls that don't require a nine-one-one response, and they call nine-one-one anyway. And that's, I mean, that's across the nation, and it's not something new.
You're drilled into, call nine-one-one, call nine-one-one, and it's not, okay, now, now you're, I'm seeing some of this.
Because the alternative is, I'm not really feeling well, you know, I'm not really sure, and nobody calls nine-one-one, and then the worst thing happens. So.
Okay, who would you call in lieu of nine? You need some, something.
Your neighbor.
That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for.
When I say public education for the, for the upset stomach that you're vomiting and you wanna get checked out, that's great. If, if you can't get yourself to the hospital, then you're gonna call nine-one-one. When, when you have other family members in the house that are capable of taking you to a doctor's appointment, that might not be a, you know, there's a lot of public education that, that could be.
No, that's.
And I, I don't wanna get too deep into it because I can't say, you can't call nine-one-one. If you need to, call nine-one-one.
And the nine-one-one system is, is built, it's not flawless, but it's built to take the right information and ask the right questions and get a proper response. You, you know, would we rather overrespond a little bit than not respond enough, probably, right? You'd probably err on the side of sending help rather than not sending help. But there are plenty of techniques to make sure it balances out and we're not, we're not, we're not complaining about that. I, I think that's working well.
Well, I'm just looking at this, I, I see, now I'm seeing something.
So.
I could not call nine, I would call something else.
So just, so just to correct that chart as Ray pointed out, right? So that, if you look at that chart on your page, that chart is not fifty percent. I know it looks like fifty percent, but the bottom of that chart starts at two thousand, not at zero. So it's more like seventy-five percent. That was a, that was a quick look in the chart.
Right, but there's.
Got us while we were writing the narrative. It is, we can correct it.
And, and the other thing about lift assists too, having worked in medicine for a while, for healthcare for a while, you really, you don't know. I mean, you don't know, you really don't. I mean, if they can't get up, there's a reason why they can't get up. And if they stay on the floor long enough, you end up with kidney damage and end up having a heart attack and stroking. And so, you know, somebody can't get up off the floor after they fell, it is the best thing to do is call nine-one-one.
From the chair, is there any more questions, sir?
I, I, well.
Go ahead.
Nope, I, I was gonna say I have none, but.
I was just gonna try to simplify it and, and for me, I, I think if you had more numbers to substantiate, you know, your, your added cost. You know, you wanna, you said you guys are new, right, for the, for the whole board?
For the board, yes.
Only a couple of years, so it's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna bear the burden of somebody else not, not putting away money for your capital, capital improvements. So if we've seen that and a little better, maybe put a number to your, your graph a little better so we can see where that money's going. I think for me, it would be.
So you're looking for a breakdown that's more detailed than the last page of this document?
Absolutely, yes.
And what's?
What do you wanna put in for capital improvements? What do you, you know, what do you?
So the non-payroll costs?
You know, what is, what is the burden of the taxpayer?
We could break down the non-payroll costs a little more.
You know, what's, and that's.
Yeah. We could add that and send that over to Mary.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, do you have anything further?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is six B, budget review for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
How you guys doing tonight?
Good. I was wondering if you were gonna fall asleep back there on this.
Nope, I was wa, I was listening. So we left off at Parks and Recreation and the capital improvement budget.
Yes.
So we're in the yellow pages.
Yep. Switching books.
Well, look at that. We get to spread out tonight. Okay, so, uh, capital improvement budget, again, this is capital improvement plan, five years. So we're at the Parks and Recreation. Um, so for the upcoming year, we have identified, uh, several, um, additional projects in the Parks area. So one, if you recall, with, uh, the Westfield Avenue tennis courts, the front courts, we're gonna be, um, uh, renovating them, not completely redoing them, but doing some renovation to them to make them into accessible pickleball courts or more dedicated towards that. This project is for the rear court, so those rear courts are in really rough shape. There, there's a lot of vegetation overgrowth that's back there. Um, so we're looking at doing a more complete renovation for the rear courts to get them activated. Um, and we may reconfigure once we get those back courts, um, uh, completed because we are looking at putting in basketball as well as having more of a multi-use, you know, with our community center gonna be there, our summer camp is gonna be there. They do a lot of multi-use type games on there, like, you know, four-square and all those kids' games. Um, a court like that is very handy for those. So we may, we may decide ultimately to switch them just because the volume of a basketball game and four-square and stuff like that maybe, and I say maybe, louder than a pickleball game. It may not. So we're gonna try and figure out what that is because the rear courts are really directly, directly behind a residence. And so we wanna be cognizant of that and try and be good neighbors. So that's really, you know, so we may shift a little bit, um, as we get through that process. But this would be to fund those, that rear, that rear court restoration. Um, the Owen Bell soccer field, so we are looking at, uh, doing the dredging and all of the dewatering is gonna happen on the soccer field. This will, so we, we were looking to redo that soccer field a little bit anyway. Remove the track, re-put a new track down. That track is pretty beat up at this point in time and it's really come to the end of its life. Um, so this deals with those components. So it's not really part of the dredging, but we, you know, we'll actually have really fertilized ground once the dredging is completed because it's all gonna dewater into that space, so it's actually gonna be, uh, easier for us to restore. We did include the Owen Bell Park Pavilion and the toddler splash pad. All of those were included in the request that I had submitted to, um, May, uh, through to May Flexer. I've not gotten an update on that, so I'm not sure that we're gonna receive grant funding on those, but we wanted to identify them. And then the other components with regards to this Owen Bell, um, there is, there is a way that we could potentially put stairs that would allow for additional parking up at KCS. And if we have stairs that come down the hill, it would actually bring them to the, uh, to the track. Um, and that would just give some of that overflow relief parking, especially during our major events. People will be able to park and then have a more direct access point to be able to get to the park. Again, it would be stairs, so we're not looking at putting in necessarily handicapped accessibility because we do have handicap parking within the park. But this does provide some of that overflow capability. The other, the next one is the River Trail Phase Six, Phase Five and Six. So, uh, we did receive notification that, uh, Deep has awarded the grant funding of six-point-nine million for, um, Killingley's Phase Six design and construction. But that also carries it all the way through Plainfield, right? Um, so Plainfield's gonna have to pay for Plainfield's portion, Killingley has to pay for Killingley's portion. This shows the full amount. It is, I believe, in, uh, an eighty-twenty grant, so I, we will have some exposure there. But, um, there's some challenges with that project in that, that grant funding came to us or was awarded with conditions. One of the conditions is that, um, Deep Wildlife Division comes to a consensus on how the trail may, um, be in, installed along their property, which is largely in Plainfield. We have had that conversation with Deep's Wildlife Division for many years and the answer has been a solid no. From the Deep's Wildlife Division, ironically, the money that we got, the awarding, uh, division for the grant is Deep. So, um, but they put the, but they put the condition in the grant that we come to, that we come to a consensus with Deep Wildlife Division on where this project is, where it's gonna traverse in Plainfield. And I say in Plainfield because on Killingley's side of the fence, while there is some of their wildlife, um, property in Killingley, it's a very short distance. And we would be fine with it hugging the border of that, but the largest impact of that is on Plainfield. And it doesn't make sense for Killingley to install Phase Six of this without the Plainfield piece, which is why they incorporated it all into one grant. So, um, we'll see where that goes. So there's some challenges, which is why this is in outer years because there's some challenges in how that's going to function. And honestly, I, I think really in this, unless the state steps in to manage their own internal departments and figure this out internally, I, I'm not sure that the towns are going to be able to influence that decision too much more. You know, we've, we've made the hard-pressed effort on this for many times and it's been categorically a hard no. So it's uncertain on that. Um, and then Davis, uh, the parks at Davis property, that has sat in the year five of our capital improvement plan every year that I have ever been in Killingley. And so, and that really, so that parcel, so we have been, we have an active gravel contract. You're gonna see that fund further down in the, in the F pages in our, in our individual fund. Um, in our individual fund pages. So we've been collecting revenue from that contract and all of that, the, the goal of that fund was that we would eventually utilize those resources to install athletic fields on that property when the gravel operation was completed or when the town was ready for us to install those. So we need to, you know, with the, um, with the ask for, um, doing the capacity study at the wastewater treatment plant and potentially looking at a, at a capacity increase for the wastewater treatment plant, that may be impact, that may impact the Little League fields that are directly behind it because we need space in order to be able to do that expansion. And it may make sense that we shift those and, and look at doing the Davis property. It still would be a several years out on that, but, um, that's intent, that's what the intent was for that. So, um, that's kind of been sitting there as a placeholder throughout the duration of this. But there is more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in that fund for that insta, for installation of fields at this point. But it's just unclear as to when we're actually gonna kinda get to that point. So it's remained on the radar.
Now, the contract we have for them, uh, doing the gravel, um, pulling the gravel out of there. Is there wording in there that makes them return it to a certain condition?
Yes.
When they're done?
Yeah, they have to return it to a certain condition, but that condition is a baseline condition. So it's not necessarily athletic field, right? So there's a difference between, you know, what the grading would requirement, requirement would be. Um, we are looking at taking the material that we're gonna dewater from the, um, Owen Bell dredging and we'll move it to this property because we'll be able to utilize that in some of the base materials for that field creation as well. So there may be some internal, um, uh, internal work that we can do in that, in that field creation as opposed to contracting it all out. There may be some initial dirt work that we can do, or we may be able to have the contractor utilize, the existing gravel operator utilize that material to help create a, a, a more robust base, if you will, for our athletic fields.
On the Davis property, through to Grapevine, I'm getting some negative vibes from some people, so I, I don't know how through or whatever. But it's saying that the gravel operation, the town is gonna cease to gravel operation.
So they have an active contract. We, they've still been removing material. We continue to go down there and monitor that. You know, we check elevations, we monitor the removal of material, um, and they continue to remove the material. We have not had any conversations with the contractor around ending that contract in any way, shape or form.
Okay, 'cause I get involved in this stuff, so I, that's why I wanna know a little bit.
So, yeah, and it may just be that, you know, there's, with the, with the capacity, um, study for the WPCA and the discussion around, is that gonna have an impact to Little League? Maybe there's some presumptions that people are making. But, um, we would have to have conversations with that operator well in advance and we're not at that, at that stage at this point in time. So, um, they're gonna continue to operate under their existing contract. We may decide to look at it when it comes up for renewal, which I believe it still has another two years before it comes up for renewal. So we may decide in two years, let's, you know, we might have a better picture as to where the capacity study is. And as we know with wastewater treatment, sometimes that infrastructure money can take decades to get to us. So, um, and that's just how it works. So we, you know, we'll monitor that. We're not looking to shut them off prematurely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Parks and Recreation? Not, we'll move to the, so the school capital budget, that was a separate document that you received from the Board of Education. We only summarize that in here. Um, so all of the details are in their documents, but essentially for the current year, the two items that they put, the one for the high school is the replacement of the greenhouse roof. And for the Goodyear, it's the, uh, they're redoing, they're looking at redoing the parking lot, right? So those are the two capital projects that they have slated for the upcoming year, that, in their proposal. And if, um, if you wanna, if you need an, an additional copy of that, let me know. I can definitely make sure I give you a new copy of their capital project plan. Yep.
On those two, like it says, bond funds and state education grant fund.
Yeah.
Bond funds.
So.
Is it the town bonding, the town does?
The town always does the bonding, so the, the depart, the town is always responsible for borrowing. Board of Education cannot bond funding. It's the town. So we always identify all of their projects as funded through school construction grant fund, uh, projects. That being said, they may opt to decide to use non-lapsing fund for these because, um, they may or may not be eligible under Office of School Construction. And they, to be fair, it may not be worth the time and effort to get through Office of School Construction in order to get that reimbursement. It's just, um, it, sometimes that will, that will escalate the cost of a project because they add a whole bunch of additional things into the project, um, as you're well aware, right? So, um, so we've identified that as a funding source. The Board of Ed may decide, and if the Board of Ed decided to use, decides to use non-lapsing, that is purely within their purview to do. Um, and they can get that completed through non-lapsing.
Is, is there a minimum amount to go out and provide?
So, um, typically, so I would say that there's not, you can only really bond, you have to bond more than two million dollars in a given shot, right? So when I go out to the bond market, you're selling bonds. If you're going out for, you wouldn't go out for anything less than two million dollars because you're gonna get no bids. Nobody's gonna bid on your bonds, right? So what we typically do, so if the town were to have approved projects that are less than that, we combine them together into one, into one bond package, right? And the town has done in the past where they've taken small projects. Um, and we've done this with, you know, it might be a school project and some town projects, combine them all together into one bond authorization. Um, and then that makes it large enough. Typically, we look for bond packages that are somewhere between the five to seven million mark as kind of the baseline. The next, if everybody's good with Parks and, with school budget, um, the next one is Water Pollution Control Authority. I'm not gonna go over theirs because they are gonna be presenting to you next week. So the Water, WPCA will present their own, uh, capital projects. Then we will get into, so the pink pages are other funds. So these funds that you have before you in the pink pages are either, they're, uh, the revenue could be contributions from general fund. Um, but they are, they, the expenditures from these funds do not impact mill rate. This is not general fund money. This is separate reserve funds. So as we talked about in the expenditure pages, the town contributes every year to our capital non-recurring, our CNR funds for the replacement of our equipment. That's the revenue that's feeding into this first page and this one is the towns. So this is all strictly for town vehicles. We actually have an inventory. It is by VIN. You have to replace VIN number for VIN number, right? So they have to identify the vehicle by VIN number. That's getting replaced. That's how much we've saved up so much money for. It's not just a pot of money. It is, we save up by VIN number. So that way we are truly attributing that contribution to the actual depreciation that we've charged within the budget. So this is, so we're looking at replacing one of the dump trucks, um, the recreation, it, the recreation vehicle is, um, the staff vehicle, they use that to transport a lot of the equipment to like summer camp and to events and things like that. That's the, that's the vehicle that we're looking to replace. The one that we currently have, it's actually really old. It's, I think it's like fifteen years old at this point in time. It's definitely, um, seen better days, so we're looking to replace that. Um, the library copier, this is the public one, that one gets a lot of abuse and it's used a lot. So, um, we need to replace that one. It's actually had a lot of downtime. So they've had to, um, do some copying on the staff copy machine more recently. We're looking at, um, so with the pooled vehicles, this is where we talked about when we were talking about law, uh, I think it was, um, law enforcement, they had requested a vehicle. a vehicle, and I took it out. It's because we're able to replace vehicles under what we've already saved within that fund, and we can free up a vehicle that will be able to be reused elsewhere that is a lower mileage vehicle, right? So we don't necessarily just get rid of a vehicle if we're able to deploy it elsewhere. There is one vehicle that we have to get rid of, we call it the rabbit wagon. It, it dies constantly, and there's so much, the staff, most of the staff don't even wanna take it, because it's so chronic, like you get to where you're going, and then it dies, and you can't get home, right? So it's just been, it's chronically had failures, um, and we've limped it along for a long time, and that one just has to go. But, um, if we're able to take a higher utilization vehicle and move it into a lower utilization for a period of time, that's what we do. Or use it as a spare, so that way it gives relief to the vehicles. The Parks vehicle is the, one of the crew leader vehicles, and that one, um, while we're, we're replacing that main crew leader vehicle, it will actually be, the one that he's driving will actually circulate into one of this, for one of the seasonal park positions. So it's again going from that very high utilization to a much lower utilization. We can still use it for a number of years, but not quite at the same level that we're doing it right now. Currently, that vehicle goes out plowing in the wintertime and stuff like that. By moving it to a seasonal vehicle, it's not gonna have that brutal plowing, uh, job. It'll also provide that additional, um, spare relief for their existing fleet. Um, and then lastly, voting machines. This is really not the actual tabulators themselves, this is the cabinets that the tabulators, um, uh, get, essentially the ballots get locked into. They've just been beaten up over the years, they get moved around, um, you know, our highway department puts them in trucks, and they move them over to the voting locations. We haven't bought new cabinets in over 20 years. It's time for new cabinets. So, um, that's what this is for, is to replace some of those actual cabinets. So is there any questions on the town side? And again, we're not asking for any additional funds out of general fund to, you know, make up any, um, market, there're sufficient funds within the fund to replace those. The next page is capital non-recurring student transportation. So this is all of the buses and student transportation, so passenger vans that they're transporting students in and buses. That is it. We do not do any depreciation or replacement of maintenance vehicles. This is strictly tr, uh, student transportation. Um, and so they're looking at replacing two 90 passenger buses. Again, that is, uh, that is currently available in the fund for those vehicles, and so that's what their request is. Any questions on that? So then the last one we'll go to is the capital non-recurring for the sewer. And again, the sewer department, they're, the WPCA's gonna be presenting next week to you guys, but this is the list of, they have within their budget, um, a, a capital non-recurring equipment request. This is the outline of their equipment request, and there's, you know, quite a bit of, um, additional equipment in there that they're looking to get replaced. And I know sometimes people will look at that and go, but didn't we just have a facility upgrade? It didn't touch all of the pieces of equipment in the facility, and it also didn't touch all of our pump stations. So there's still a lot of equipment that, um, still needs to be upgraded. And that's why they've been contributing to their own C and R as well, in order for them to be able to make that.
All right, really quick, I don't know if anybody else's packet is like this, I have two F1, F2 pages in mind, so if you got confused as to why you turned the page and you didn't see the sewer.
Take one out. Sorry about that. I didn't look through every single one of them, I apologize. You got a bonus page. There you go. It's better than missing a page, right?
True.
So, um, that's the capital, uh, for the C and R, uh, for the sewer department, our WPCA. If you guys are good with that, we'll move to the capital reserve fund. So this is that sand and gravel. This is where our gravel contract, this is the revenue, so as you can see, we have $949,000 in that fund. And I will say, having priced out, um, a field restoration in Putnam for when they relocated their fields for the municipal complex, that field installation without lights was almost $800,000, right? And that was baseball, multi-use soccer, multi-use fields, right? So that was a combination. So 900,000, it's gonna be all of that to get, especially if we're looking at installing a bunch of, uh, baseball softball fields, 'cause those do require, the infield's have, um, different grading and different materials that you're using. Um, also, all of the fencing that goes with that, the fencing is very expensive, um, and that, so, so that, that's what this fund has been kind of designated for through the, you know, really, all of the time that I've been with Killingley, it's been kind of the, the standard projection of what the, the, the end, end use of that fund is gonna be. The next one on that page is, yep, sorry.
Now, um, with respect to the gravel operation, could we, well, potential with the sewer expansion that's looming out there, and people know that the Little League field will probably go down here, can we move the gravel operation along, that, can we push it to take more out to get some?
Yeah, so I think that really depends on, you know, we'll look at that when we start coming closer, when we, when we have a better understanding of timing with regards to the capacity, uh, expansion. Um, right now, we have to do a study on that and then design, so that's a little ways out. Um, I think it would time, that conversation would time well with the renewal phase of that contract, and then we could potentially put in parameters to escalate the excavation part, if we deemed it necessary. We could always determine at that point that the space that's there is sufficient, right? So those are all things that staff is evaluating, they're going down there, checking. I wanna say there's at least 15 different layouts of athletic fields that have been done for this parcel over the years. Um, I've seen many of them, we keep rearranging the Lego blocks, um, but it all depends on what the community's needs are at the time, right? So while they may have had a certain configuration thought of 20 years ago, it may not meet the demand of what we have now, right? So that's what we're trying to be cognizant of. So, um, is that a potential part of the conversation? It could be. Um, and it also will depend on what the op, the gravel operator's capacity to do that would be.
Because sometimes you let it fire to get, now we're, it's, we're seeing the potential. Like before, yeah, it was out there, it was way out there, and now giving the conversations with the WPCA, it's, it's getting a little hotter.
Yeah.
And so you accelerate the gravel removal, and then we get closer to, you know, all of a sudden, what we may want to see.
Right.
Totally, like you said, totally different in 20 years, but all of a sudden, they, they hit a, a goal line of really great gravel, well, we renegotiate, let them have that, but, but the topography final is, so both parties come out ahead.
Right. Yep.
Additional negotiations there.
Right. So the next one on that page is our info, information technology. So this reserve fund is one that is funded by the general fund, that, um, revenue is the reserve balance, the reserve contribution that we put in annually. This fund is really for what we talked about before, hardware, equipment replacement, as well as major software, um, replacement. So like when we had to replace the finance software, um, and if we have to do any major, um, upgrades due to cybersecurity or any of those things. As they come, as they get rolled out to us, we have here to go first, and then we can just build into the operating budget, the ongoing, um, subscription or renewal costs, as opposed to having to absorb the full implementation costs that comes from here. Any questions on info technology?
On, on that one, like the, the $1,800 other, what does that, is that, that's revenue?
Oh, that's copy, that's copier money. So we get, um, we charge copy fees for certain copy machines within the town hall for public copies, and that money goes into this fund, um, as a part of that replacement. It's from our plotting machine, so our large map machine, that's what that's from. Thank you.
FOIA requests going to the same place?
I'm sorry?
Uh, money we get for FOIA requests for printing, that goes in the same account?
Um, no, that actually goes into miscellaneous revenue in the general fund. Yep. Any other questions on info technology? If not, we'll move over to LoSIP. So LoSIP is, uh, state grant funds that we are eligible for. We don't receive the money directly, we receive notification of an allocation. It is a reimbursement basis grant, so we have to have the projects identified in our capital improvement plan, and then we, uh, submit for that. It has to meet certain eligibility requirements, which we always make sure that the project would meet that before we place it in our capital improvement plan. And then we, uh, look for reimbursement. So the capital, the $100,000, that is the mechanics pit restoration, um, and we're looking at utilizing LoSIP funding for that. Any questions on that? If not, we'll go over to the self-insured fund. So self-insured fund, we maintain, you know, the general fund and the WPCA make annual uh, reserve contributions into this fund, and this is to manage, um, either deductibles for insurance claims or, um, damage that may have occurred that doesn't rise to the threshold of needing to file an insurance claim, i.e. our window from the turkey. Right? That's not gonna be an insurance claim, so we're not gonna have a deductible on it, but we do have a, a fairly substantial expense there. That will come from here, because that's why we have a self-insured fund, right? But it's a prime example, there was nothing fresher to put than that, right?
My only question is, how was lunch yesterday?
I didn't have turkey.
What'd you say, how is the, did he survive?
No, the turkey did not, did not survive the impact.
I, I wanted to know if somebody actually could get home.
No. There was actually an entire flock. It wasn't just one, there was an entire flock of them, and they, right, it got, right, the flock, the flock got spooked by the traffic on Main Street and came in this direction, and he just happened, or he or she, I don't know which, the turkey managed to miss, um, the opening to get past the building. So, yeah, um, it was unfortunate, but that's a prime example of what, so we're not having to hit a repair maintenance line for a catastrophic event like that, we can come to here. Or if there's, you know, a major, you know, there are times when we have damage to our, um, our restroom facilities at Owen Bell that don't rise to the level of an insurance claim, and we may not get restor, restitution from the offender, it comes from here, in order for us to be able to manage that.
It's the same thing with some of our light pole claims, so like, we've had a lot of light pole claims here on Main Street, so even to file with the insurance companies, like, 'cause we're not, we're not at fault, the other person that hit it is, um, they won't even consider reimbursing us until we can prove that we've made all the repairs, so it also makes a place to make these expenditures out of and then seek the, and then sometimes we get calls from the courts wanting to know what the, what the fund should be for restitution, and it's a matter of how long it takes to collect them.
So we do that. Any other questions on self-insured? If not, we'll go over to the Nathan Prince, Prince Trust. So this is really an endowment fund that was, uh, given to the town many, many moons ago, and it is specifically for library purposes. It is for exclusively the purchasing of books for the library, and so if you actually peeled back about 10 or 15 years in our budget, the expense that we had in the operating budget for books was pretty substantial, it was over 50 or 60,000 dollars in a year. We have shrunken that considerably by utilizing this fund, right? So we've been able to utilize this. So as you can see, um, we have, um, uh, interest that comes in and the expenditure amount for the books that we're intending to do. This is just the ongoing interest balance of it. The actual trust fund itself is, like over a million?
Yeah, 'cause it's not just Killingley.
Yeah, so it's a larger global, but, um, we get an interest portion out of that, but the large, the, the fund, the trust itself is over a million dollars, so, um, we've been able to, um, really reduce the amount of general fund reliance for purchasing and maintaining our collection by the utilization of this fund. But it is specifically just for the use of purchasing books, so we can't charge other library expenditures to that trust fund. The next one that we have is the fuel system, uh, fund, and so this is, fund is, um, is, uh, uh, we receive our revenue by charging a three cents per gallon fuel surcharge, and that goes to all users of our fuel system. So the town, the Board of Education, the fire departments, KB ambulance, everybody that use, huh? Yep, NDTH uses ours. Everybody that uses our fuel system, added to that bill is a three cent surcharge to come into this, into this, uh, fund. This is to handle all upgrades or changes, um, repairs to the fuel system itself. So all users are participant in that, um, which, you know, definitely helps stabilize and it, and it, you know, has everybody, all the users share in that burden of cost based on your own utilization, right? And it's worked out very well. We've used this to actually, we, through this fund, we did have to supplement it, um, because we replaced all the fuel tanks and the full fuel system. We did have to supplement it for that, but all of them, more, uh, regular repairs or minor upgrades, we've been able to handle a lot of that fund. Um, the last one is solid waste disposal fund, and I know three of you have already reviewed this, because this came before your solid waste, uh, subcommittee, um, but this is the, uh, uh, solid waste fund for the operation of the transfer station. So we are anticipating an increase in residential permit fees. There was a pretty, um, there was an increase by one of the local, um, haulers that pick up from at Curbside, and we, since that increase went in, since Casella's increase went in, we have seen a lot more people coming and pulling, um, residential transfer station permits, um, and start using the transfer station. That being, you know, so we are monitoring that, because we've seen waves like this where they start coming, and it's great during the wintertime, but then they get to the summertime, and a lot of people don't wanna put their trash in their car in the summer, right? So that can kind of ebb and flow, so we're, we're mindful of that, and we are watching that, um, that trend, so we've been a bit conservative on that revenue component, but that, we're expecting, um, a higher utilization, a higher, um, utilization of that. Also, they did add an additional 10,000 out of the use of the fund balance, and that means that the ask for the general fund is the same. It's a flat level ask, so there's no increase to that ask.
If you look at that number, that's 234,000, that's a big number to subsidize, uh, people, you know, complain when we, when we looked at the townwide and this and that, well, I can go up there and my premises, but then the town is subsidizing a big home construction.
Yeah, a lot of people don't recognize how much they're paying in their mill rate for it.
Right, everybody is paying for that.
Yes. Everybody pays for that, even if you don't use it, everybody's paying for it. It is, and so, uh, Casella, they did, uh, renew their contract, it was a 3% increase, so, um, you know, that was, actually, we were expecting, I was anticipating substantially higher, 'cause I've seen increases by, um, waste companies substantially higher, double digits. Um, so having a 3% was, um, really pretty conservative for an increase, bless you. Yep?
The 234,000, what does that equate to as far as mill?
It's about a third of them, about a, a quarter of a mill.
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's about a quarter of a mill.
It's 234 divided by 15.
Yep. I know, we're both doing it. I don't know. I gotta get to the, I gotta get to the value of a mill. 1387, 1387, 152. So it is, uh, .17 mills.
Thank you.
It's just 'cause it was open already. It's just, yeah, just shy of a quarter, so.
All right, I've got a question now, 'cause I get a little lost, like, so the C and R on the first thing of the pink pages, uh, that doesn't affect your mill.
So that is...
When did we start affecting the mill in the pink pages?
We don't. So the mill rates...
But the solid waste is a pink page.
Right, so there's a, so each of these do have revenue components that are... Right, so there's, so each of these do have revenue components that are, you know, potentially coming from the mil rate. So when I, when I say that, I mean, the expenditures out of these pages aren't impacting mil rate. So there is revenue components that are driven from the, um, expenditure pages, like the C and R, right? So if you go through the yellow page, the tan pages, you'll see C and R contribution, right? That's the revenue that's coming over to this pink page. The expenditures on this part are not impacting mil rate because these are coming out of those individual funds, right? So that's, that's what I mean by that, so I apologize if that was confusing. Um, and solid waste, we have, we end up the...
Transfer station's been costing us money for, for years, decades.
Continually, um, yeah, so I apologize if that was confusing, I'm sorry. Um, and then, and many of those, like the C and R fund and stuff like that, where we have an increased, we don't have any additional ask in order to be able to replace those vehicles, so there's no additional ask as an increase to the mil rate in order for those replacements to take place. That's what I meant by that. Okay. And then the last pages, the brown pages, are again your sewer fund pages, that will be gone over by the WPCA next week. So, and just, you know, just as a quick reminder, when you're looking at the sewer fund, the WPCA, remember that this year is the first year that we went to town operations, so when you look back to the 21, 22, it's like a whole bunch of zeros, um, that's because we were under contract operation, and so it was all in one big number. This is the first year, we had to split it all out, um, and then, uh, we have the upcoming proposed budget for that. But the WPCA will review all of those items at your regular meeting next week.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Uh, maybe one question with the, uh, I guess the registrar and the town clerk, with the early voting, what are you seeing, I mean, I'm hearing 14 days, 10 days, 21 days, weekends, uh, using voting machines, using the system, uh...
The absentee balloting system?
Absentee ballot system, what's...
So the last that I've heard, and I'm getting, I'm going to another CCM legislative update again on Thursday, and that's a topic of conversation, is early voting and the legislation around that. Currently, the proposals that seem to be getting traction, and I say seem to be because sometimes they seem to get traction, then all of a sudden it turns into completely something else with the state, but, or with legislators, um, 10 days, um, only Saturdays, not Sundays, um, and they're going towards the absentee balloting process because by utilizing the tabulators, the tabulators would have to be closed out every single day, which means you would get printouts of what the results are for that, and that could give a potential unfair advantage, right? Like somebody could, a, a candidate may find out that they're under by X amount, and so go out and push for more, right? So that's not the intent of early voting, and so that's what, uh, currently that's kinda getting some traction, is to still stick with more along the lines of the absentee style balloting, where they wouldn't be putting it into the actual, uh, tabulators, but rather keeping it aside, and all of those would get run through the day of election, but, um, and that there would be state funding to handle any additional costs associated, so any of our overtime costs, any additional printing costs, any of those in order to be able to accomplish that early voting period would be, um, that state would, uh, fund that. So again, that's, you know, currently what we're seeing for that early voter process, but that's one of those packages that seems to shift, but that's where it's so far been landing.
So for some reason, the cost gets dumped on us, our contingency fund...
Correct, correct, so if, if, you know, and that's why we have that unforeseen, right? If all of a sudden the state goes, nope, towns, you're just stuck with it, and this is what we, it's an unfunded mandate at that point, right? And we end up with the unfunded mandate, we would be able to go to the, uh, contingency fund in order to be able to manage those costs.
Thank you. No further questions, comments?
Question, Jerry?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed, I wanna continue it.
So I will just remind everyone that you will not, you will not have a meeting tomorrow night or Thursday night, we will issue cancellation notices for all of the as-needed ones going forward, so tomorrow, Thursday, Monday, next Wednesday, all of those get canceled. We gave you nights back, which I'm sure you need, right?
This meeting is adjourned.